Thank you all for coming. I'm going to call the Carson City School Board, Board of Trustees meeting to order. We're going to do the presentation of the colors by Carson High. Please all stand. Mike, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just as for all. Order, talus. Aye. Aye. Order. Aye.
Thank you. It seemed like an apropos way to start a meeting after Memorial Weekend. Thank you for being here. Go ahead and start with number two, adoption of the agenda. Motion by Mike, second by Laurel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto superintendent.
You didn't ask for public comment on that?
Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to number three, superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board, and welcome to our family and friends that are joining us this evening. I would like to invite our board representatives who are students. Looks like Casey, are you here by yourself? Would you join me at the front of the room here? Casey has been with us as a student representative from Pioneer High School for two years. And it's been our pleasure to watch him grow and develop as a young man. And of course, he has brought with him the news and the activities and the adventures from Pioneer High School. And we have a little memento here that we'd like to give Casey and thank him for his service. We know he'll go on to do many more great and exciting things. And we wish you, Casey, all the best as you move on into the remainder of your high school career.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your service. And of course, representing Carson High School is Ryan Waller. And Ryan maybe has finals or something else going on tonight that's prevented him from being here. But we'll make sure that he gets this. And certainly, our thanks for the work that he's done in representing Carson High School. Thank you, Casey. Is Crystal Vargas here? I was watching for her. And I did not see her come in. I wanted to make a little noise about Crystal. As you may have seen in the newspaper, Crystal has been named a U.S. Presidential Scholar. And let me just tell you a little bit about this very prestigious award. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the president to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. In 1979, the program was extended to recognize students who demonstrated exceptional talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was again extended to recognize students who demonstrated ability and accomplishment in career and technical education fields. Each year, up to 161 students are named as Presidential Scholars. So typically, no more than three from any state get this award. And it truly is one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. And we have one of those coming out of Carson High School, Ms. Crystal Vargas. And I wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of her achievement, have an opportunity to recognize her publicly, and wish her all the best. She is hoping to get into medical school at UNR. And she has served diligently in the local chapter of HOSA, which is our Health Occupation Student Association. She has worked as chapter secretary and also as the vice president. She and her team, a year or so ago, were state champions in her particular competition area. And she went on with her team to the Nationals where they placed 10th. So truly, a very deserving young woman. And we're very proud of her. That's Crystal Vargas. And if you have a chance to pass along your congratulations to her, please do so as well. Next, I would like to invite Dan Myers from Carson High School to come forward and talk a little bit more about the NJROTC program. Mr. Myers. I don't know if you want to stand or sit.
As long as I talk, I probably want to sit. But actually, I had no intention of talking. I thought it would be appropriate if I had the cadets speak about an award that we earned this year in our program. So I am going to turn the mic over, if I may, to Cadet Sanchez.
These are cool. They are new. So hi, my name is Cadet Brianna Sanchez, and I am the outgoing CO at Carson High School. And one thing about our award really quick that I wanted to throw out is that we receive distinguished unit with honors, which means we are the number one school in Area 13, which consists of the West Coast mainly. It's 47 schools out of the West Coast, so basically from Colorado over. But it was a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication from all the cadets in the unit. So it's a huge accomplishment and a huge achievement. And we're all very excited about it. So I'm just going to give it over to my incoming CO, Cadet Kyle Navarro.
Good evening, everybody. As she introduced, I am Cadet Kyle Navarro. And I wanted to say again, thank you for recognizing us for our award. We worked really hard at it. But we appreciate your recognition for it. And next year, we're hoping to do the same thing again, get number one in the nation now. So that's what we're in contention for now. So we're looking forward to a good year next year. So thank you very much, everybody.
I asked you guys to be here because I went to that award ceremony, and it was so incredible. And I've been to a lot of events this year where you guys have done your community service. But you're really doing this really low key. This is a huge award. We've never been a highly distinguished unit. We are in running for number one in the nation against 11 other schools. I mean, this is incredible.
That's exactly what I was going to say, that they... I was all excited about being, you know, in competition with, actually with 10 other schools because there's only 11 areas. And it was like, yeah, that's the big thing. But thank you for bringing that, Madam President, because, yeah, they did really well. I'm proud of them. And I know Chief is as well, if I speak.
And we appreciate you coming. It's been a busy week for everybody. So a lot of them couldn't come because we had assembly bills and other stuff going on. So I really appreciate you guys taking time so that we can recognize you. And you guys can stand up and be stared at instead of me.
For our outgoing CO, what are your plans after high school? You might, sorry, you might have to use the microphone, yeah.
I use this so everybody can hear, sorry. So as of now, I am currently enrolled at WNC, and I plan on getting my associate's degree of science. And then I'm going to transfer to UNR and get my master's degree in environmental engineering. So that's my plan right now. But I don't know, things could change.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Madam President, if we could get a photograph, we have, we'd like to invite the cadets maybe to come around in the front with their trophy. And then Mr. Davis is here for a photograph, if we could do that.
We're looking forward to seeing you guys here with that number one trophy.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to next invite Ms. Katie Leo to join me at the front of the room here. Katie is a familiar face and certainly one of our very good partners. She is the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada. And as you know, for the last two years, she has hosted one of our pre-K classrooms at her facility and has been so accommodating. It's really, we are very grateful to have a partner of this magnitude who has opened her doors to us, provided all of the things that we needed, and has really been one of the best hosts ever. So we had a occasion to get a little plaque that she can hang over in her office that simply shows our appreciation for Katie and for the work that she's done. And we hope that all of the things that she undertakes in the future, and I know those are significant, will go well. And if we can be of any help or any support in any of her work, we certainly extend that hand of fellowship.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
It's been my pleasure.
Sure. I feel like, I was at the assembly yesterday, and I sat. They didn't let me stand. But I just wanted to say thank you to the school board, to the school district. Sue and Richard have been amazing partners, as well as my favorite pre-K teachers and Laura and Valerie. Is Valerie Dockery here tonight? Oh, she's not here. She's one of my favorite people in the whole world. And I'm holding you to one of the best partners, like, in the whole wide world that you've ever had. So we're looking forward to many more partnerships with you. And again, our doors are open for all kids in the school district. And we are looking, I'm looking forward to going to Fremont and visiting Darrell because we're going to miss the four-year-olds running around singing Hakuna Matata in the bathroom at the top of their lungs at 8:00 a.m., or just screaming and running through the building. So it's been our pleasure. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Madam President, members of the board, that's a great segue for us to talk a little bit about our pre-K program within the school district and to help introduce our pre-K teachers and to talk about that program and some of the successes. I'd like to introduce Dr. Laura Austin.
Button is green. Good evening, everybody, members of the board, superintendent, wonderful administration. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about a culminating activity of our pre-K program. I know I've been here a couple of times and given you kind of the quick facts about the program. But I'm here today to share with you a great success that we've experienced with the pre-K. Part of the grant is that we need to participate in what's called the Quality Rating and Improvement System, which is run through the Nevada Department of Ed, through the Nevada Registry. It is actually a statewide system for both public and private early childhood programs. And that one of the main reasons for its existence is to inform parents on how to find quality early childhood education and birth to, for, I guess, birth of five years, actually, in the community. So with that said, we participate with the Early Childhood Advisory Council, and they are trying to get more and more entities to go through the rating system. But it was required, I want to make that super clear, it was required for us as part of our grant to participate in the rating system. Two-year system, the first year, each classroom is observed. A three, excuse me, a three-hour observation minimum on two different measures. One is called the Eckers Three. The other measure is called the class. One measures, is quite extensive, the Eckers Three measures everything from how often children wash their hands to the quality of questioning between adult and child. How many books are available per child? How are the books used? How many blocks per child? That's been a real challenge to meet that. How the space in the room is used. It's quite challenging, this, this observation and this protocol. It's each measure, and there's about, I want to say, 55 points that the teachers are measured on just with the Eckers Three. Each measure is on a scale of one to seven, seven being almost impossible to achieve across the board. I would say impossible to achieve across the board. But what you're hoping for is to have a score of three, four, or five overall. And that's our pre. And then the post is the second year, they come back, and they see how well you've done on both measures. Again, the class is a shorter observation, about 30 minutes to an hour. And the Eckers is another three, three-and-a-half hour observation. The teachers don't know when it's going to happen. They just know that it's going to be sometime in March, and it ended up being sometime in April or May. So that was super tricky. And they all just, Sean and our scores came out just more than we could ever have hoped for. Again, a score of three is very, very good. A score of five is superior. Fremont is a three, Empire is a five. And then Mark Twain and Boarderwick are overall four. But I just want to emphasize, it was not the score. It was the process. And one thing that came along with this process through the grant was an internal coach. And it was, that was a year-long position. It was filled by the wonderful Casey Gillis, who of course is one of our former principals in the district. And I just want to give a nod to Casey. I think she's in the room. There she is. She, she took that protocol, especially the Eckers, to heart, and she really guided the teachers. And the teachers were just magnanimous in how they approached the professional development. So with that said, Mr. Stokes, I don't know if you want me to have the teachers all come up and introduce themselves. That would be awesome. We have some of our teachers in the room and our paraprofessionals. So if you would please come on up, Nevada Ready Pre-K, woo-woo, in the room. And I do want to remind you that we have seven classrooms. We have nine teachers. That includes Kendra Tuttle, who is our inclusion specialist. You know, we are a fully inclusion, inclusive program. We have 14 paraprofessionals and along with our teachers. So I am going to actually have everybody just come by the microphone. Seriously, guys, oh, and we have our banner, dun-da-dun-da. Yes. This happens to be the Empire banner. I did ask them, I am that person, I did ask them to bring their banners. And so if you guys with the banners, if you would just come on up, I don't know, do we have cameras to the community out here? I don't know. But if you guys want to come on up, Janet, just sneak around, yeah. And then the, our wonderful board members can see. If you guys want to just come on up here and stand in front of the table, I'm not above just micromanaging.
Dan, are you doing another picture?
Thank you. Okay. So there you go. And you can see, we encourage them, in all seriousness. In all seriousness, this is a very serious state rating. Parents should be looking for this when they are seeking high-quality childcare or education for their, their zero-to-five-year-olds. And now we, as a district, at this time, have a, an overall rating of four, which we could put on our website, Mr. Davis, if we wanted to. But truly, it is an honor for the district to be, have gone through this rating system and to be rated so highly. So I do want to thank the board for all the support that you give pre-K. So with that said, if everybody would just come on by and introduce yourself and your team and your school.
And when you're done introducing yourself, I think Dan wants to get a picture of everybody, so we'll kind of funnel up here.
I'm Darrell Clark. I work at the pre-K at the Boys and Girls Club. And these are my pairs.
Hi. Oh, got to press it. Okay. Hi, I'm Michelle Brock, and I'm a paraprofessional at the Boys and Girls Club.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ayala. I'm the ESL pair at the Boys and Girls Club.
Beth Jones, pre-K teacher at Mark Twain.
Maggie Kirsten from Empire.
And Rhonda Roth, we are the two pre-K teachers at Empire. And these are our wonderful parapros, Janet Ayala, Arisali Zepeda Soto, and Beth Rubke. And our other parapro is not here.
Hi, I'm Cassidy Russell, and I'm pre-K teacher at Boarderwick Bray.
I'm Lori McDonald, Boarderwick Bray with Cassidy and Taya.
Gloria Menmackin, paraprofessional, with Taya and Cassidy.
Liz Meltrami, pre-K teacher at Fremont.
Casey Gillis, I have the honor of working with all these wonderful women this year. It's just, they, you, you can't believe the work that all of them do. And when they're being evaluated, it isn't even just the teacher in the room. Everyone in the room, every parapro, every adult in that room is being judged and scored. And it was across the board. Every school improved, every school had such wonderful scores, especially in the things that are important. Pupil relationships, literacy, how they treat each other, how the children talk, language. This is where there were sixes and sevens, and you can't get any higher than that. So hats off to these wonderful people. Laura, thank you for letting me do this.
And we are, we're waiting, of course, for funding information from the legislature. But we are hoping that the program, that Casey's position will be funded again and that she'll take us through the next two-year cycle. The next time we get observed is actually, and get another rating, is in two years. So the rating we have currently is for two years. So thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Maybe put the banners more so we can see them. You guys are going to have to tighten up, too. On the end, you're going to have to tighten up, maybe go in front. All right, right here, three, two, one. And one more, three, two, one. Perfect.
Madam, Madam President, members of the board, that will be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That was an amazing report. Onto board reports. Casey, your last one. Go for it.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Echebría for being selected as Teacher of the Month by Carson State Rotary, Rotary Club. Celebrations are in order for Pioneer High School senior Savannah Lavi. She has earned two scholarships, the Nevada Promise Scholarship and the Hometown Hero Scholarship. We are having a movie night coming up on Friday, May 31st, from 2:30 to 5:30 p.m., free emissions and free popcorn, bring your own blankets. Graduation is on Tuesday, June 4th, 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center. Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
Good evening, everyone. Boarderwick Bray, I got a real short board report, but their fifth grade promotion is going to be at 8:45 on June 5th. That's the last day of school, so they would like to invite everybody over to watch that. And at Carson Middle School, this week, they're having their eighth-grade mock job interviews. And I had the privilege of conducting some interviews today. And I tell you, we got a lot to look forward to. We had some very bright kids who came by and did a very good job in the interviews that I sat on. And that'll be the end of my report.
For Fritsch Elementary School, they'd like to thank all the staff that helped out and the PTA for helping to put on the family barbecue last Thursday. They also had a gate showcase that was really phenomenal. And the PTA served 275 hamburgers and 260 hot dogs. They ran out of food. But the kids and families all had a great time at that event. And also, they are welcoming fingerprinted volunteers to come and help out on Monday for Field Day. And for Fremont Elementary School, they are looking forward to their Fall Festival. And they are also wanting you to save the date for September 13th. That will be the grand opening with the new addition. So more details to come on that. And just check your, it's, it's the promotion and graduation. And just check your, it's the promotion and graduation and all of that, so check your schedules and see what you can attend if you're able to. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
I did not have a chance to check with my principals from the schools that I represent, but I do want to commend Mr. Stokes for all the work that he's doing and for participating in all these end-of-the-year activities. He sends us reports, and I was just so impressed of all of the activities that he is involved in. So thank you for all that work and the representation. And I also want to thank Tasha Fuzon for the amazing group of students who participated in commencement for Jump Start, for the Jump Start program. It was a wonderful group of students who participated at the Western Nevada College commencement, so we're super proud of them, and especially super proud of Trustee Cassiope's daughter for participating in the program. It is extremely impressive to see these stellar kids excelling in their education. We certainly definitely want to see that program grow. So thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Joe.
Yeah, I was gonna mention Jump Start as well, but congratulations to everybody. I know Principal Fuzon and Mrs. Kima were there, and Lupe and I were there, and I'm sure, I couldn't see everybody, it was literally standing room only. We kept getting chased down from the dirt above the walls there because there was really nowhere to be. But we had twenty, I think it was twenty-two students from Carson High School as part of that, and there were combined over a hundred students. So these are high school kids, high school students that achieved their Associate of Arts degree and went through their commencement ceremony two weeks before they graduated high school. So it's, you know, it's really impressive, and we're really, we are, you know, we've got a lot for these kids to do. We've got the Honors and AP program, the CTE, the Jump Start, we just have a lot of amazing opportunities for these kids. And, you know, if you're a kid who's excelling, or not excelling, we have so many opportunities for you to do so. So congratulations to all the kids. Speaking of that kind of stuff, those students who are interested in AP, if you haven't done it already, now's the time to talk to your instructors because you got to get your summer homework assignments. But so, you know, it's good to get a jump on that. Whether you're graduating or applying for jobs, or going to college and applying for scholarships and whatnot, everybody wants a resume from these students. So the high school has resume assistants, you can schedule an appointment with the Career Center, and they can help you through preparing a resume. On May 16th, we had Salute to Scholars, where all the students who applied for and received scholarships, that was a huge night. I never heard what the total dollar amount of scholarships was being awarded, but, you know, it's really a tremendous amount of money, and we had a lot of students that achieved a number of scholarships. So congratulations to all those students. You mentioned mock interviews at the eighth-grade level, yeah, we were there today interviewing eighth-grade students, and every year it gets better and better. Not only are these kids showing up to be interviewed, and some are nervous, you know, some are too cool to be nervous, but, you know, so I was nervous for them. But, you know, it's really interesting, because not only now are they coming with resumes and cover letters, but some of these students are actually doing some research and telling us what it is they want to do after school, and they've, you know, they've researched what it takes to become, you know, what they want to be, whether it's an attorney or a veterinarian or whatever, and they research, you know, how much money they can make, and so they really came well-prepared. So I think the teachers are doing a really good job preparing these kids for these interviews. Yeah, right, exactly. And that was all I had, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to, Casey, to say thanks for everything you've done. You know, for anybody who thinks it's easy to sit up here and talk in front of people, I think Casey can attest to the fact that it's a different story when the microphone gets turned on and everybody's staring at you. But congratulations, thanks for everything you've done, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Mike.
So I just wanted to take a minute, I mean, I know this is the budget meeting, and so I told AJ this today in a phone call, but I think that we need to recognize this hard work and this effort, there's been a lot of unknowns, and there's been a huge effort that you've put towards educating many in the state about the inadequacies in the funding and kind of the repercussions of the new model that's been rolling out. And so I thank you for your leadership, I think that you've done us proud, so thank you for that. So, and then also, I just wanted to, of course, thank trustees Varner and Cassiope for their service, being Memorial Day yesterday, and so thank you. And someone has let us know we had a trustee trying to sneak a birthday by us. So Mr. Varner turned another year older yesterday, which is a cause for celebration, so happy birthday, trustee Varner.
Thank you. I'm not having any more birthdays.
So now it's official, everybody on the board's over 21.
So that concludes my report.
Thank you. We probably also should recognize Mr. Stokes, since he was at the budget hearing until quarter to midnight on Tuesday, too, so we do appreciate all the hard work you're putting into.
Madam President, if I could just address trustee Ramirez's remark, I don't go to all those by myself, I have great staff who, we divide and conquer, we sometimes just can't be in all those places, and I want to make sure they get, do recognition. Thank you.
And it has been great to see staff everywhere, we appreciate it. And moving on to association reports. Just take this opportunity to thank our associations, too, for showing up at the legislature and helping us get some momentum going there, we appreciate all your time and effort down there, too.
Hi, Madam President, trustees, administration, and Renee back there. My name's Loretta Marson, I'm VP of CESA, and I brought along another association person, Mrs. Carrie Flynn, and she's, Finn, sorry. I have it right here, written right here. And, okay. And she's president of the CCHSPA, that's a mouthful. Anyway, I'll talk first, just wanted to update you, we're going to be doing a restructuring meeting this Thursday, and we've had to cancel a few meetings because it's the end of the year, and we just haven't been able to connect, so hopefully we'll get something going on Thursday. So we'll update you as we go, thank you.
Carrie.
Hello. Green. Okay. Hello, so my name's Carrie Finn, president of CCHSPA. I just wanted to say that we are in the process of merging with OCEA and CESA, so our four-year RNs are going to be going with OCEA, and the two-year RNs and the EMTs are going with the Classifieds. Wanted to thank Dr. Delphin, Mr. Stokes, AJ, Mrs. Kima. We've been having meetings, they've been going well, I've learned a lot. So that's pretty much it. This will be my last meeting and my last month as president, so thank you. That's it.
Loretta, before you go, I'd like to thank you for your invite to your banquet, enjoyed it, and just thank you, you guys are doing a great job.
Well, thank you for showing up, we had a nice time and a lot of food. Thank you.
Loretta, you probably need this candy for Thursday, this leftover candy. Little off-topic, it's nice to have association reports where they're not telling, they're striking in August, by the way. And our teachers are getting a 2% raise, so without the governor telling us. Anyway, onto public comment. Comments may be made by members of the public by any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at this time that are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matters until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to come to the podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers have been asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and to simply not repeat comments made by others. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the fun stuff and the reason you're all here, because it's obviously not the budget. Number seven. Introduction of the 2019 Carson City School District retiree and employees who are leaving the district after ten years or more of service. Mr. Stokes, I do want to take this opportunity, because we do have a budget, there are a lot of you that have been here forever, and you've sacrificed a lot for us to have an ending fund balance and to be in the predicament that we're in, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you for that, we really do appreciate it. And we're in the financials because of the way that you guys have sacrificed, the time that you've been here, so we appreciate that.
Madam President, members of the board, nights like tonight are a little bittersweet for me. I have seen most of the individuals who are in this room, who worked for us, from some of the first moments of their hire. I've experienced much with many of these staff members, and it's difficult now to think that we're going to be able to carry on doing our work without them. I sometimes feel like if I talk long enough and make this part of the meeting go long enough, they won't retire and we'll be able to still hang on to them.
I tried, I tried that last year and they didn't let me.
But it is a wonderful thing to think of them not only as individuals who are critical to make our operation work, but to think of them as good colleagues and friends, and to wish them nothing but the best as they move on into the next phase of their life. So with that, in no particular order, we thought we would start with our administration retirees first, yeah.
Just a reminder, if anybody, because I know cameras will start coming out, but if anybody wants to come up here to get a picture, you're welcome to.
Thank you. So since we changed this format a little bit, there's not a podium, and it seems a little awkward on times like this, so rather than make people sit down, we're gonna make them stand. But as I call your name, if you would just come forward, and Jose told me that we have in excess of 600 years of experience that will be leaving our district this year, and that's pretty significant when you think about the institutional knowledge, the experience, the good hearts, the love, just the goodness that goes around and that we're fortunate to have in our school district. And so if we have any administrators or supervisors that are in the room here that would also like to make a little show of their appreciation with a gift or card, flowers, whatever, we invite them to come up. But we'd like to save most of our time for our retirees, if they would like to say a few words or offer some comments, we certainly invite that. It's not a requirement to retire, by the way, but if you'd like to say a few words, please feel free to do so. So we'd like to start by having Judy Falkowski, she is an accountant in our Fiscal Services Department. Judy, would you please come up? And hands of applause are certainly appreciated.
Just really quickly, because I know we have a lot of folks here, Judy has been here for over 30 years, has finally earned the right to walk away without me giving her too much grief. Judy, by herself, is responsible for the accounting of all $140 million that come into the district each year, and making sure that all those accounts, all 19 accounts we have, get reconciled every single month. And she has done an amazing job. Our auditors would agree with that over and over again. So very, very well-deserved, and wish her all the best.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the school district, I've been here almost half my life, it seems kind of weird, but I have a lot of treasured memories to take with me, and I thank you for all the opportunities and friendships and experience, and it will be missed and greatly treasured.
And if you're trying to do the math, Judy was only 10 when she started with us. And Mrs. Susan Kima, if you'd come up, never thought I'd see this day, Mrs. Kima. Mrs. Kima has been an administrator and has worked diligently in our school system, and has really done amazing work in helping us to grow and to have our school district where it is right now. Can't say enough good things, really the driving force behind all the great work that happened with our Race to the Top. And we just wish you all the best, Mrs. Kima, thanks for the good times, and even for the bad ones, you made those entertaining. A few words.
Well, I'm thankful for being recognized with this esteemed group of people tonight, I want to address them. I'm always so pleased to be with staff who serve our students, especially those of you who are with us tonight. You are the best of the best. And I'm here to say that we see you. Oftentimes, you do a lot of things for our students, some of them are visible and much goes unseen. And I want to say again, we are here, we see you, and it's not just me, it's those people behind me. We see you when you encourage a student who is discouraged or needs a little extra help, and that doesn't just mean the classroom, that means on the bus, in the office, on a sporting field, in the, as a crossing guard, or even in the recess duty. We see you when you welcome a meeting with parents who are concerned about their child. We see you when you lay out new challenges to students who are thriving, and when you stay late to offer extra help to another student who is struggling. We see you when you try a new tactic to engage students in a lesson, and upon your success, we see you when you share it with your peers. This group knows better than most that none of our students are identical. Every student is unique, and each one learns differently. I have three children and five grandchildren, and even though they have a common gene pool, they're distinctly different, and they thrive on different sorts of challenges. I suspect the same is true with the students that you serve. I am grateful for your ability to stretch our students, providing them with only academic nut, damn it. I didn't mean to throw in some, I meant to get some humor in there, but that wasn't it, I'm sorry. And I honestly think this is the first time that the ratings would beat me out, right? I'm sorry. So I'm grateful for your ability to stretch our students, providing them with not only our academic support, but life's lessons along the way. I think we share the same philosophy. Our students deserve the best, and you gave them the best. Congratulations.
Mrs. Kima will be with us through the end of June, and that'll be enough time to work out a little detention, I think. Next, from Carson High School, if we could have Misty Guantanamo come up, please.
Misty started in 1999 and has been a PE teacher at Carson High, and we wish her the best as she moves on to her next phase of the world.
I turn it off, I do things backwards, I turn it off. This has been a wonderful journey, and just like our students and giving them opportunities what they need to do to grow, the school district has given me. So I get to move forward in a different capacity, though I will be here in town in a partnership, I get to move on to the world of, I'll be a marriage and family therapist. So lots of kids to still work with and partner, and, you know, I look at so many of you, and it's like I've had your kid and your kid, and thank you all, every parent in here, we couldn't do our job if you didn't give us good kids, so thank you.
Also leaving us from Carson High School is Linda Hicksonbaugh, science teacher, began her career with us in 1992. Ms. Hicksonbaugh?
Okay. It has been an honor to spend half of my adult life teaching as well, and I really appreciate Mr. Stokes' words of wisdom. You've gotten me through a lot of hard times. Thank you. And thank you to everyone.
And Kathy Yao, are you here, Kathy? Yes. Spanish teacher at Carson High School. Started, I believe we came the same year, 2001. How is it that you're leaving before I am?
Mr. Stokes, I was gonna say, she was here in 91, because, and before then, because she was my French teacher back.
Wow, okay.
In 82, she was my French teacher.
Well, you can't go any place. These guys all have kids.
She apparently started when she was about six years old.
Well, Kathy, congratulations, and certainly, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, that's fine.
Very good. Well, thank you, and I think Ms. Stuson has something. So those who are leaving us from Carson High School, in addition to these folks, we'll be losing Nathan Gordner, math teacher, and we'll also be losing Mr. John Martin, ceramics teacher. So again, thank you, folks, from Carson High School. Next, we'd like to recognize our retiring staff from Carson Middle School, Teda Cook.
I just want to say thank you that I couldn't do what I do without some amazing colleagues. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. For those retiring, if you could stay after all we're done, we'd like to get a big picture of everyone for promotional purposes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Our next retiree is Vicky Tyrell, attendance office specialist at Carson Middle School. Vicky? Vicky is that friendly face that everybody meets, and not everybody on the other side of the wall has a friendly face on. Do they, Vicky? We're gonna miss her. She's such a delight and such a pleasure to interact with. Thank you, Vicky, for all you've done. Like to say a few words?
It's just been a pleasure working for the Carson City School District. I've loved every moment of it. Thank you.
Was trying to watch the door to see if I saw any of our other retiring staff. We have Beth Proust. Did Beth make it tonight? So we're losing Beth at the same time, and Len Ayers is also leaving. So like to recognize our good friends at Carson Middle and wish them the best in their retirement. Eagle Valley Middle School, Wade Greenley? Wade got a, Wade got a better offer, sounds like. And, but we want to thank Wade for his work, and certainly has done some tremendous teaching to adults as well, as well as to students. And we also have Kathy Ruggeri is here tonight. Kathy, come on up. Kathy works at Eagle Valley Middle School as a paraprofessional for and has distinguished herself amongst our staff, and want to say thank you for your work.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy. From Borderwick Bray Elementary, Denise Apolategi? Thank you. Hello. We are really grateful for the service you provided, and wish you all the best as you move from Fremont into the, or Borderwick Bray, sorry. You moved to sites, didn't you, from one place to the other? Borderwick Bray. So anything you'd like to share with us?
Well, I'm grateful for all the opportunities that I've had to work with the school district, and now I am moving on to a new life in Southern California with my high school sweetheart that I've reconnected with, and I'll give my expertise to California schools. So, thank you.
Well, all the best in your new life. Also at Borderwick Bray, Robin Hutchison. Congratulations.
I am extremely grateful for all the wonderful people I met through my teaching career. I have taught for 36 years, eight in Montana and 28 here in Carson City. My husband and I bought a home in Ohio near my children, and we're excited to be moving in the next year, and I'll be volunteering at schools. Thank you.
Also retiring this year is Mrs. Gail Mauer, paraprofessional at Borderwick Bray.
Yes. I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to work at Borderwick Bray for 21 years and teach children reading, and hopefully they love to read now. And it's just been a joy to work there all through the years, and thanks to the wonderful staff and all of you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Also leaving us this year is Kristen Winnicky, speech language pathologist.
Well, I am only 42, so I can't retire yet. I've put in 12 years at Borderwick Bray. I've loved every moment. The kids have been amazing, and I've learned so much from the staff. I hope to come back one day. I'm gonna raise my three-year-old for a little while and take a little time and explore some yoga therapy for students with autism and ADHD, and look at some science behind that as well, and come back with some information, and we'll see. Who knows? Thank you.
Next, we'll move to Empire Elementary School. And like to invite Margaret Kirsten, preschool teacher, to come forward.
Well, I came over here to Carson back in 2008 when my twin boys graduated and moved to Oregon, and went to the middle school, and had a great time, and I really appreciate having the technology that was provided to me. I don't know how I taught without an Elmo before then. It's amazing. And then all the training you guys have provided with HQSI and T-Soul and the Gate endorsements. I've loved being a lifetime learner the last 10 years here, and thank you so much for everything.
Next, recognizing staff from Fremont Elementary. If I could first start with our pre-K teacher, Elizabeth Beltrami.
It's been a long haul. I started teaching 43 years ago, and 35 of them have been here in Carson City. And I've had the pleasure to work with some really wonderful administrators and teachers, and I think I'm just gonna be grandma next year for a while. Thank you.
If I could have Sherri Chenon, second grade teacher at Fremont, come up.
I didn't know there would be comments, and I don't know who to talk to. I started teaching in 92 in Lion County, and I hope I don't tear up. I might cry or too. No, I'll cry with you. On my way out to Silver Springs, every day I would drive past Fremont, and I'd think to myself, gosh, that looks like it'd be a neat school to work at. And then I had my son. And I didn't want to make the commute, so I began schmoozing everybody I could, and Nancy Colly hired me. And it's been great working there, and just wonderful people, and so many, it's just a good district. And so anyways, now I'm going to, my son's about to go into Carson High School, so I'm gonna be with him in that journey as he does that, and I'm really excited. I could have actually gone to Fallon and made life a lot easier, but I want him to be at Carson High School because of the opportunities there. So that's what we're doing.
And also from Fremont Elementary, Rebecca Iger. Rebecca Fuke Iger, sorry. She was flinging when I first met her.
Do you just push this button? I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm obviously not retiring. I've been with the school district for 12 years, and I've had some ups and downs, challenges, some wonderful memories made. I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I've had some really instrumental people in my life. I especially want to say thank you to my administrators for your support and your encouragement and your love. Thank you for being there for me. I'm looking forward to raising my two boys for a little while, and then we'll see what happens. So I'm gonna focus on being a mom right now. So that's where my journey saved me. Thank you so much.
Next, from Fritsch Elementary, Diane Hale, speech pathologist.
Madam President and Members of the Board, Mr. Stokes and all of our school district administrators, I just want to take a moment to say thank you. I am so grateful for the opportunity that I've had to work in Carson City School District for almost 30 years, and I've made so many wonderful friends, and I just look at each of you as heroes in my life, really. I am so grateful for what you do for the kids in our community, and I'm so lucky to have had the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people and administrators, teachers, families, and especially the kids. I will miss them so much, and I will leave a little piece of my heart here in Carson City, and I think this is your fault, Mrs. Kima. But thank you so much.
Also retiring from Fritsch Elementary is Lisa Holland. She's a special ed teacher, and we'll miss Lisa as well. Next, from Mark Twain Elementary, we have Bridget Brush. If she'd come up.
Thank you, School Board and Dr., Mr. Stokes. It's been an honor to work for the school district for the last 23 years. I came to teaching late, but I worked in the casinos for a lot of years in gaming, and it's truly been a pleasure, and I feel just so honored to have worked here, and I want to particularly thank my colleagues, who I couldn't have done this without, and our leadership, and especially you, Mr. Stokes. You've been a good friend and a good leader. Thank you.
Also leaving us from Mark Twain Elementary, we have Mr. Todd Birchel. Todd?
Well, I think everybody said everything. I don't have anything left to say. I do want to recognize for many of us, that some people don't really connect to, is the spouses that we have that have supported us through all these years. 27 years at Mark Twain. I remember when it was literally a hole in the ground. When I first saw it, it was a hole in the ground. And just been an amazing adventure. So thank you for everyone for your support. Thank you.
And also from Mark Twain Elementary, third grade teacher, Elizabeth Tryon.
Members of the Board, Superintendent and District, thank you very much for this opportunity. When I first came to Carson City, it was so much smaller than it is now, and there've been so many changes. About 10 years ago, they installed all of the security doors at the schools, and we had the opportunity to write on a inside door that would be covered up. And I remember writing something like, "I've given 20 years of my life to this school." And now I would write, "I've spent 30 years here, and it's been a good place to be." And so I want to thank all of you and for your support, and thank my administrator and administrators, and all my wonderful colleagues that have made this such a wonderful and a good place to be. Thank you.
Leaving us from Seliger Elementary, Kristy Telling, paraprofessional.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, School Board. I have actually been with the school district. I think my first paycheck was like, part-time, 1987. My kids were little. We moved here in 82, and once most of them were out the door, I started volunteering at schools, and they said, "Come work in the library. We need to help. Would you sub for somebody? Would you come work in the office? Someone's not here. Would you come interview for this job?" And that's kind of how it all started. So I worked part-time 10 years, and then I worked for special ed for the last 198. And worked for the psychologists under Ruth Abersturi and Dr. Keith Crossgarry, and what a blessing it's been, what a journey it's been. I'm not gonna look at you. I think Liz and I both have been here for a long time, but I thank you. It's been, it really has been a wonderful journey. See a lot of familiar faces. I used to travel all over the school district. So, so many familiar faces, and I've been so fortunate, blessed, to be able to have worked with such, I'm not gonna look at you either, such a wonderful group of people. Thank you.
Also retiring this year from Seliger Elementary is Vice Principal Julie Cowan. Wanted to recognize her. Student Support Services, we have Penny Nichols, who left the district a little bit earlier. Did Penny make it here tonight? Okay, we want to certainly thank her for her work. She has been instrumental in teaching reading for a number of years as well, and we wish her the best. Christina Cooper also left in January of this past year, and we wanted to recognize her as well. From our Transportation Department, I know that Bud Milstead is here. Bud, would you come up, please? Bud served as a bus driver for our disabled students. We want to thank him for his service.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words, Bud? You've never, you've never been short on words.
He's as job I ever had. That's it.
Thank you Bud for your service. Also from the Transportation Department, we have our Office Specialist Janet Lido will be leaving us as well. So we wish, uh, wish our folks from the Transportation Department all the best as they retire. From our Prison Ed Program, Deborah Robinson. Did not make it tonight and also our computer teacher out in that, um, that system, Karen Randall. Karen didn't make it? Okay. Well, uh, again, folks, it has, uh, truly been my pleasure to have rubbed shoulders, as it were, with you and I appreciate the good work that you've provided, the care, the concern, the dedication. It's hard work, working for the school district, no matter what Bud says.[655.82][655.82][laughter] And, uh, I want to recognize that and thank you for your contribution and your dedication. Trustees, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to offer?
Well, obviously I just want to congratulate everybody. I mean, it really is a great school district, um, and the reason it's a great school district is because of all of you and all your peers. You know, we're, we're up here trying to support what you do. We appreciate what you've done and we're really happy to see that, you know, we're sad to see you go, but we're really happy to see that, you know, this is where you want to be and we wish you all the best. You know, I kind of go down the list and, um, you know, I look at all the people, Julie Cohen, I've known Julie since we both coached soccer twenty-something years ago, through her joining the school district, um, Diane Hale, not through school, but through musical theater. She was kind enough to share a stage with somebody that had no business being on the same stage with her. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, Mrs. Beltrami taught, you know, got my kids going in the right direction, so I appreciate you for that. Um, Mrs. Yao, same thing, Spanish, um, you know, my, my kids have cycled through there. Mr. Gerdner, you know, I've, I've been working with Mr. Gerdner for a while and then of course, Mrs. Kima. Mrs. Kima hired my wife years ago and, uh, best decision she ever made.[749.69][749.69][laughter] Aside from the paycheck, got her, you know, got her gainfully employed and we stopped spending so much money.[757.23][757.23][laughter] But, uh, no, I really appreciate all you've done for the school district. Um, you know, again, it's a great school district. We have some great leadership as well and you're, you know, you have big shoes to fill and we, we really are going to miss you, so thanks for everything you've done and everything all of you have done.
I wanted to join Joe and just congratulate everybody and, you know, as I stated earlier, we're losing six hundred years of experience and it's going to be hard to replace and we just wanted to really thank you for spending so much time with us and, uh, working so hard for the school district and for the kids of Carson City. Thank you very much. Mrs. Kima, enjoy your retirement.
So I just want to say, as I look at the list, I see so many people I've worked with. So whether it's Diane Hale sneaking out of the school at eight o'clock at night as I was showing up to work, I'm like, "Hey." Scared her. It's like, "Go home, don't work this late." But really, the contributions you've all made are so huge and your colleagues know what you have done, the kids know what you have done, your spouses know. So thank you for all those little things that nobody even knows, those extra lunches you brought, the extra desk cleaning you did after school, the calls to parents to kind of support and help in weird ways that nobody would ever even think about. Thank you for all those contributions. And I said to Mr. Stokes when we were seeing everybody come in, I said, "I don't know how you're going to replace all these people." And I think he agreed with me that the work you do is tremendous, it's recognized and you have earned this retirement, so go do something really great.
And remember, we have a lot of committees you can get on to.[872.13][872.13][laughter] All right, all of you come up and get your picture taken and we'll get you going. Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. We'll, we'll go ahead and take a two-minute recess, so if anybody wants to leave and
Madam President, members of the board, because we had a little earlier start than usual, uh, we did not convey our start time well to our students and so we'd like to take this opportunity to, uh, first off, introduce, uh, or have Ryan join me. Uh, we'd like to recognize him as our, uh, student representative on the board from Carson High School. Ryan, come on down.[1406.73][1406.73][applause]
So as with Casey, we have just a, a little token of our thanks. We know you spent a lot of Tuesday nights down here where maybe otherwise you could have had other things to do, but we hope this has been a good experience. We hope you've enjoyed it and of course, Ryan continues his studies next year at Carson High School and do you know who your replacement will be?
Um, yes, it'll be Ginger Colom. So, yeah, she's a sophomore this year, next year she'll be a junior, so.
Okay, and, uh, well, we, we look forward to still seeing you from time to time, hope you'll come back and say hi, but thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.[1453.73][1453.73][applause] And we also have Crystal Vargas. Crystal, if you'd come up, please. Of course, we talked a little bit, uh, about the Presidential Scholar, uh, Program just itself and on the twenty-third of June, Crystal will be joining some, uh, colleagues from other schools. We have, uh, one young man from Bishop Gorman High School in Las Vegas and also, uh, one from North Las Vegas Northwest Career and Tech Academy. So along with Crystal, these individuals will be going to Washington DC, I believe, to, uh, receive this prestigious medal and certainly represent us in Carson City and, uh, we're really proud of you, I just hope you know that. It's been fun to follow your career and see the things that you've been doing and I hope this is a, a memorable experience for you and I hope you meet some, uh, fun kids. Would you like to say anything?
Uh, no, I'm good.[1521.54][1521.54][laughter]
No, 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 no. You've been, we've got to watch you grow up in the last four years, so let us know what you're going to do now.
Okay. So, on the twenty-third, I gotta go to Washington, so I'm gonna fly from Florida, cause I'll be at Hosa Nationals and I'm gonna fly to Washington and supposedly Donald Trump's gonna present the medallion, but knowing how he is, he's gonna make his wife do it, but it's okay.[1548.54][1548.54][laughter] Um, anyways, um, Lupe, I'm very happy to see you. Like, not to be rude or anything, it's very rare that we see people of color up there and that means a lot to me. Um, and thank you to all the board members for, I feel like I've been here a couple times this year, but thank you for listening to me talk and, you know, share my story. But next year I'll be going to UNR, majoring in neuroscience, pre-med, and hopefully I get to go to med school, but if not, I'll do something else. But, thank you.
I'm sure you'll be great at whatever you do.[1584.04][1584.04][applause] Crystal, I just want to say you're next.[1588.82][1588.82][laughter] Ryan, did you have a report?
Um, yes.
Okay. Give it to us.
Do you, members of the board, sorry I'm an hour late.
No worries.
Um, so this Friday for all incoming freshmen, so eighth graders this year who are going to be freshmen next year, both from Eagle Valley and Carson Middle School, there's going to be something called the Big Blue, um, Big Blue Bash, which is put on by Link Crew, which is kind of like the freshman coordination club, kind of help them get a step in the right direction, good confidence. So that's just going to be kind of a dance at Senator Square, kind of like Homecoming Winter Fest, for, um, all eighth graders at CMS and EVMS or St. Teresa's or any middle school that are going to be attending, um, Carson High School next year for their freshman year. Um, it's a really good event, annual event that, um, I mean, it's super fun. It helps gets the kids a lot of confidence and know that, you know, even though high school may be a lot, it's something that can easily, easily be successfully, um, accomplished. Um, and also next week will be the last week of school, so it's kind of a weird funky schedule, but Monday, um, June third, um, students will have A1, A3, and AB-55 in order for finals. And, um, June fourth and fifth, um, Tuesday and Wednesday respectively, will be the last two days and those will be minimum days, so students will get out at eleven twenty-five AM. And so those periods, I mean, then that'll be the rest of the periods that they have. Um, and so that'll be their final periods. So Wednesday is the last day of school for all students and Saturday, June eighth, yes, June eighth, will be graduation at nine AM at the football field at Carson High School. And, um, on June eighteenth will be the physical night for all athletes, um, so that'll be like ten-dollar physicals, much cheaper than any other doctor's office you go to. Um, it's put on by the school, so that'll be ver- very good event. And the first day of school, I believe, is August nineteenth, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate you being here. Be, feel free to come and see us next year, too.
We'll do it.
Alrighty. Moving on to number eight, discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of the two thousand nineteen Advanced Placement Psychology Materials for grades nine through twelve for the Carson City School District as budgeted for possible action.
Susan Kima for the record and I promise not to swear.[1752.35][1752.35][laughter] Tonight, Allison Cadwell and our six to twelve implementation specialist and I are happy to present to you selected instructional materials for our district's high school AP Psychology course. I am here to testify the selection process follows the NRS and MAC requirements and that it should be noted for the record that we do not have any additional community members review the materials. Per your authorization, the product is slated to be, uh, the next step is to go to the State Board for their approval. I would like to acknowledge the committee members who are with us tonight. We have Mr. Will Hulk, who is the AP Psych teacher at the high school, Carson High School. Uh, we have Department Chair Jenny Chandler and of course, Allison. Uh, we have Department Chair Jenny Chandler, and of course, Ally Cadwell, who helped facilitate the process. We also like to give a special attention to our parent, Melissa Brown, for her work and dedication in helping to select the materials for this curriculum. The approximate cost for this product is about $6,100. And at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Ally, who will tell you why the committee selected Myers Psychology for the AP course, which you have that book up there.
Hi, I'm Ally Cadwell, for the record. And, um, actually, I am gonna hand it over to Will, because he is the expert in the field.
My name is Will Houck, for the record, and I'm the AP Psychology teacher at Carson High School. I chose the Myers textbook. We had three different textbooks to look at, and the Myers textbook is the one that we currently have. This is an updated version of it. It's a very popular textbook for AP Psychology teachers around the country. It does a very thorough job of taking you through the 14 chapters that are part of the syllabus for the AP course. And I just think it does an incredible job of, of giving the, uh, all the, all the things that the kids will need for preparation for the test.
Ms. Varner?
On, I don't know what page it is, but on Area 29, where when you said it meets standards are inadequate, the material reflects a variety of ways to differentiate instruction model content to support all learners. Uh, that was marked inadequate, and it says aside from the Spanish glossary, no EL or special ed differentiated support. I'm wondering, is that gonna be a problem for our EL students or special ed students?
I, I don't think so. I, I went through the TESOL endorsement recently over the last couple of years, and I think that the, the things that I learned in those classes can be applied at the AP level as well as the regular ed level. Um, I can adapt materials for that as needed. None of the books are, you know, 100% perfect in every single area. Some are lacking here and there, but I felt like that was a minor area that I can adjust for.
Um, Ally Cadwell, I can add to that, too. Because it's a, it's basically a college-level course, that is something that we've seen through the AP government and any other, I feel like there's another AP, but all the AP courses, they, they do, AP US, yeah, they do tend to lack that scaffolding simply because they are a college-level course, so the expectation is that students will be at that college level. But I think our district provides for that training to get teachers to where they can support students as they're getting to that level.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a, this may be a silly question, but I just have to ask. Um, and the front, it says Grades 9 through 12. Are these classes available to the kids from 9 through 12?
No, not the AP class. It's for, for juniors and seniors.
Why, why 9 through 12? Why does it say Grades 9 through 12?
I, you.
Generally, when we fill out the paperwork, we put the level, so it's the high school level, middle school level, or elementary level.
Thank you.
And that doesn't allow, that allows for flexibility should we ever make changes.
Madam President, I'd like to move that the Carson City District Board of Trustees approve the recommended 2019 Advanced Placement Psychology Materials for Grades 9 to 12, as proposed by the Committee for the Carson City School District as budgeted, as presented this evening.
Motion by Mike, second by Joe. Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you all for your time, too. We know it takes a lot for a textbook adoption, so we do appreciate the time that you took to do this.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Moving on to number 10, or number nine. Discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of 2019 Social Studies material for Grades 6 through 12 for the Carson City School District as budgeted for possible action.
Susan Kima, for the record. Again, Allison Cadwell and myself, along with Jenny Chandler and Will, we're happy to present to you selected instructional materials for 6 through 12 Social Studies courses. I'm here to testify, again, that the selection process for, followed the NRS and NAC requirements, and that we did not have any additional community members come to review the books. Per your authorization, the product, the next step, again, is for this product to go to the State Board for their approval. I'd like to thank committee members from both of the district's middle and high schools for participating in the selection of these instructional materials. You have their names on each of the adoptions, their lists, but I'd like to say public, a public thank you to Fabiola Russo, who supported both levels and weighed in on Social Studies cour, on all of the Social Studies classes. You'll see her name throughout the documents. The approximate cost for this adoption is about $215,000. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ally or Jennifer, whoever you direct it to at this time. Okay?
Hi, again, Ally Cadwell, for the record. Um, so, what we decided to do in the interest of time, and because the resources that we looked at cover, they're, they have a common, they have a lot of commonalities to them, so we thought we could speak to them as a whole, and then we can point out some of the really great features in the textbooks. So, one thing that we looked at were that the new standards focus on looking at history through multiple perspectives. The new standards call for a global approach of content for contextual understanding, like what's going on in the rest of the world when we're looking at a particular area or country. And then also, the C3 standards, which is College, Career, and Civic Life, which is what our new standards encompass, they take an inquiry approach to learning, meaning that students have to develop thinking skills and apply the thinking skills to real-world problems throughout each course. So, we're always looking at the past, but applying it to real-world problems. We also had to think about Common Core. Uh, we need rigorous grade-level reading throughout each course. Uh, we have independent practice with difficult text, so we want our students to be able, you know, to read difficult text and when they're coming across things throughout their life. Generally, in Social Studies, we're looking at primary sources. Throughout the Social Studies is where kids get their contact with very rigorous text. And then writing or presenting to various audiences in a clear and organized way is a really important Common Core focus, as well as our C3 standards. So, with those things in mind, all of the resources that we've selected that you have in front of you have all of those different elements. And then they also were selected because they have a close alignment to our Carson City School District's scope and sequence of the courses, so we're not having to go back and remap anything. They, they come to us, and then they work for us. We're the boss there. They all provide language support for English language learners. They provide differentiation strategies for special populations, in particular, special education, but even GATE or honors courses or pre-ACT. So, we really liked all of the levels that the courses, the textbooks offer. They also have rigorous textbook reading, but also a lot of reading support and instructional strategies for struggling readers. Um, and then they also, because of our high use of Google Classroom and our one-to-one mobile technology, our teachers prefer to use a lot of the online sources, like the field journals, notebooks, and other consumables. Uh, we choose not to consume them. We're gonna use them as our master copies, and then we can PDF things as we go, or we can convert things into the Google Classroom setting, so we're really cutting down on that waste there. All of the online platforms were very high-quality and rigorous and contain supplementals for easy student and teacher use. So, we know our digital natives can go right on there and go into any course, but teachers need to be able to keep up with our students as well. And then I have some examples, but I can wait. I tried to get some different examples for things that I can show you, or if you just wanna take a look and ask questions, that's fine. However, works for you.
This'll surprise you, but I do have a question. It's just kinda for my knowledge, it doesn't affect, I, I support getting this program, but I know that the contract is probably a master state-of-Nevada contract, and it really reads at first that after the fourth year, the company can ask for a increase for the, in the costs for the remaining three years. I guess this is probably directed to you, Mrs. Kima. Does that happen very often?
Not, I haven't really seen that happen in my time, because what we do is we try to really put enough in the first order that, that it, it, so, there's not as, with the loss, if students lose a textbook, we do have some extras, and we haven't, don't have to really reorder very often. And if it is, it's going on at the sites rather than from my office.
So, it's not very often the vendor will come in and ask for an increase after the fourth year?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I can add to that. Sometimes our technology, companies that are technology-based, they're worried about that item, that line in that master price agreement, because they said technology's gonna go down, not usually up. So, there's like, well, we don't, we're, we're putting out a new product in so many months that would make that a little bit cheaper for you. Well, then, we either wait, or we get it on something called a Schedule B that doesn't have to go to the State Department, that's just for our district, that says they're gonna give us at a discount price when that comes out, or something like that. So, we think that is part of the contract piece that's just for Carson City, that doesn't have to go to the State Board.
Thank you.
So, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the recommended 2019 Social Studies Materials for Grades 6 through 12, as proposed by the Committee for this Carson City School District, as budgeted and as presented this evening.
Motion by Mike, second by Joe. Any other further discussion, questions?
Just a comment, as I was going through, 'cause I heard you saying that it differentiates for ELs and GATE and pre-AP, but when you see it in the book, and then thinking that that's the sixth-grade book where you've got your GATE clusters, and you've got your striving readers and your ELs, and it just was, I was impressed with it, so I just wanted to put that out.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Chandler, sorry.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of our department, center teachers in the district, it's been a long time since Social Studies has had new materials, and it was just, it was just exciting to touch the new stuff and see it. But I think as you look at the different things that our teachers have selected, I think we have remained true to kind of what you've heard tonight about our district, right? We're a district of opportunity, and as you look at those materials, I hope they scream to you, access, access for every kid. And so, we are thrilled and really appreciate your support to be able to implement this, and it'll help us going even further to achieving our common goals together. So, thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Enjoy. Thank you again for being here. Moving on to number 10. Discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 524 Corporal Punishment. Second reading for possible action. Ms. Seer, welcome back.
Thank you, for the record, and Seer, District Risk Manager. Madam President, trustees, staff, and members of the public, this evening I have the pleasure of introducing the second reading of Policy 524, titled Corporal Punishment. This is an existing policy that has been through a routine review for updating, and as we discussed two weeks ago, the numerical reference in NRS had to be updated, and the reference from pupil changed to student. We made one minor revision for this evening's reading, and that was to replace the word "themselves" with "himself" or "herself." And that information is in your executive summary, so I'm happy to answer any questions or take any further suggestions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Carson City District School, uh, City School District Board of Trustees approve May 28, 2019, as the revised date for the Carson City School District Policy 524 Corporal Punishment.
We have a motion by Dawn, seconded by Laurel. Any other discussion by the board? Seeing none, any public discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate your time.
I just wanna say, I noticed your crate has wheels on it, and I was wondering who was gonna be carrying these outta here.
Moving on to number 11. Discussion and possible action to approve the proposed to eliminate CCSD Policy 537 Transfer Students. Second reading for possible action. Mrs. Kima.
Susan Kima, for the record. I'm recommending the elimination of Policy 537 Transfer of Students. As I mentioned the last board meeting, this information is in handbooks or students' PT folders. It doesn't require a formal board policy. I have not had anyone call me to question or talk about or suggest changes for this policy since our last meeting. In fact, I haven't had anybody call me on this policy for the last 11 years. So, I just wanted to put that out there as far, there are model practices for students who transfer classes, but actual procedures rest with the leadership of the school. I recommend approve, uh, to remove this policy.
Any questions? Any more changes?
Can make a motion if we're ready. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve May 28, 2019, as the eliminated date for CCSD Policy 537 Transfer Students.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mr. Varner. Any other discussion on the motion? Any public comment or discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for cleaning up our policies. Appreciate that. Moving on to number 12. Discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 543.1 Prevention of Sexual Misconduct Towards Students, which includes renumbering policy to 1031 in Section 1,000 All Staff. Second reading for possible action. Dr. Delphin.
Thank you, Trustee Wilkie, President Wilkie and trustees. Uh, this is not Sue's last policy. I thought it was. So, as detention, Mr. Stokes, I think she needs to be in personnel for a week. She's not going for it. Okay, so, with that, you can see the changes in the language in red, as suggested in the first reading, and the strike-throughs. So, we hope that you approve of the changes, and, uh, we can go forward, and putting it in the 1,000 All Staff series.
Any questions? Any other changes?
I was just gonna say, in the first one, that we have the Board of the Trustees of the Carson City School District. It's not gonna hold up approval, but probably should just say the Board of Trustees of the Carson City School District. We have too many of those.
Got it.
And with that, I'm on the right one here. Number 12. Uh, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve May 28, 2019, as the revised date for CCSD Policy 543.1 Prevention of Harassment, Sexual Misconduct Towards Students, which includes renumbering the policy to 1,031 in Section 1,000 All Staff.
Second. Motion by Joe, seconded by Lupe. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Changes are good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And now, moving on to the fun stuff. Presentation of the Budget Preparation Timeline and Introduction of Topics for Public Hearing on the Budget for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020, including a brief, a brief discussion for discussion only. Mr. Feeling. Mr. Feeling.
Thank you, President Wilkie and trustees, Andrew Feeling for the record. I'll have you know that I cut this presentation down from 56 slides last year to, I think, 30 this year, so I really, lot of effort, lot of effort, I just wanted you to know. Thank you for having me back. We have been talking budget for oh-so-long, it seems, this year. It's been quite a ride. But we are here tonight, this is officially the budget hearing for fiscal year 20 for the Carson City School District. We'll be reviewing, really, there's just a couple minor adjustments to the tentative budget that you heard a couple weeks ago. And although we do have some updates as recent as Saturday, which are pretty significant, so we'll, we'll discuss those a little bit. And I'll say as well, because of the session, legislative session still occurring right now, this is still a bit of a moving target, but this is an obligation that the responsibility that the district has to create this original final budget for, for submission to the Department of Taxation. Oops. Sorry. Okay. So today, just quickly go through, go through the timeline of what the budget preparation is for, for the district. We'll talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan, then we'll get into the budget presentation, and then we'll have the budget resolution that is up for your consideration and approval at the end of the presentation. So just overall for the budget, what's happening, right after the school year begins, we, we look at enrollment projections already for the coming school year. Those are incredibly important in figuring out how much money you believe you're going to have, if you know your per pupil number, which we didn't, and we still don't, but we're working on that. We get our first, we kind of go through our own first updated budget projections right after, right around, after audit time, and we'll internally go through those, and we start with doing some budget planning, we start getting our revenue projections from taxation as we get into late winter, early spring, and then at the meeting, a little over, or three, three meetings gone, no, two meetings ago, we discuss the tentative budget, which is not for approval, but we do have to submit that to the Department of Taxation. The last couple months, we just, we're doing a little fine tuning, and then we have to give our notice, so notice for this meeting was given in the Nevada appeal on the 22nd and 25th. And then we are now here on May 28th for the official budget hearing. Upon approval, it has to be, the budget has to be submitted to the Department of Taxation by June 8th. And now, one of the unique things in a, in a legislative year, and especially pertinent this year, is that after a legislative session concludes, you have 30 days after that if you would care to do an amended budget. So kind of in this case where we, at this point, really don't know our number, hopefully within the next week, we will. And so it, it may be significant enough that, if it was only a couple dollars, it may not really matter, but it, it seems, based on what we learned Saturday, it may be significant enough where it may make sense for us to actually do that. So as much as we're doing this right now, we may come back, I don't know if it would be the next board meeting, but maybe the one that follows with an amended budget, and really just recognizing some additional revenue, hopefully that we may be getting. And then come December, we have our last chance for an amended budget, and that really reflects that our, we have our known audited numbers, our financial audit numbers, and also our fall enrollments, so we can do a better job of projecting what we think our funding will be for the year. So we are going to be entering the first year of the new biennium. We don't know our per pupil number. You may have heard that on Saturday, in session, they, the legislators discussed adding money to the, the DSA per, statewide per pupil amount, which filters down to us. This was primarily done through, really cuts to many other budgets along the way, even outside of K-12 education. I think they were trying to make room to put more money into K-12 funding. And then also the, their projections for the number of students statewide decreased. So with fewer students, there's some more dollars to spread around. So right now, the, it, it, it's really unofficial, but given the document that the Department of Education sent us back in March, and if you, which gave us that, that $7,060 per pupil number, that is the per pupil number that represented in this budget, and that we've been talking about for some time. If you plug what the legislature was talking about on Saturday, and it seems that it brings us up, at, at the very least, back up to what we have this year. So that, that would be a swing of about a million dollars, which is great news for us. I believe it actually will be more than that. I don't think it'll be, at most, I think probably about 1.5 million, but it'll, it'll definitely be swinging in the right direction. So that was cause for relief, in some ways. I wouldn't call it celebration, because it still, doesn't take us past a deficit mark, but it's still better than, than we were expecting. We have the ongoing concern, and there's still a lot of work that, that we're attempting to do behind the scenes to, with the new funding model, and trying to have some influence on pieces of it that may be more harmful to districts like ours than others, but that, that's an ongoing fight. Looking at, then, some of the other pieces, enrollment, we're expecting to increase by about 53 students next year. Some of the major, one of the major funds for us, class size reduction, we still have no information on how much funding we'll receive for next year, which is, is a pretty significant amount of money, so that, we have an idea, but we're not, you know, we don't know a number for sure just yet. Concerned just the, the future of instructional technology, obviously, we have this large chunk of money annually going into instructional technology this year to, to help with reducing some of the deficit. It's been brought back to only focusing on student Chromebooks, and not necessarily replacing other instructional technology in the district. But the Chromebook piece is, is pretty essential, so we're able to continue that. Adult Ed and Prison Ed, while Mr. Santillo's programs continue to be more and more successful, and he's getting more and more students, the state reduces his funding. So it's, it's kind of a frustrating place for him, and many of the budget discussions that we've had, but down the line, it looks to be a little more hopeful, so we're, hopefully, we've adjusted his budget so that he can make it through the next year at least, and then hopefully that following year, he'll actually see an increase in funding based on the formula the state's going to be using. Special education growth, we still don't know exactly what our funding for special ed will be, although it'll likely increase because of the number of students that we have that qualify for special education services has grown. We would expect the per pupil amount for special education that we receive to also grow. So expecting some, some increase there in magnitude in the, in the funding for special education. Yeah.
Not to put you on the spot, so I hope you know the answer to this one. Approximately, how many teachers, equivalent teachers do we hire with the class size reduction? So like, if that went away, does that, is that usually accountable for like, say, 20 teachers district-wide, or is it five? You know what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah. I actually know a, a really, really exact number, it's 31.48. And it sounds strange, but there's a, there's a calculation, that they actually go back, so class size reduction began in the early, I think, 91, and, and what they did is they looked at what class sizes were on average between 1988 and 1990, across grade levels in every district individually. And then they said, okay, so in first grade, the average class size is 28.7. So they use that as a baseline, and then each year, they look at how many students you have, and they say, okay, so how many teachers would you need to get back to that baseline of 28.7? And then they say, okay, but the requirement is 22. So now, you're, you're at that, assuming you're at that baseline, every additional teacher you have to get down to that class size you need is considered a class size reduction teacher. So it's, it's a, it, it's a bit of a messy process on the accounting side, as far as day-to-day operations, no one even notices that it's happening, but that, that's how they decide, okay, so it would take you an additional five teachers to get there, so now the state is going to give you funding for those five teachers, and that's your class size reduction funding. And the, the state determines what the dollar amount per teacher is, so if it's, it's a long story, but they don't give you all the funding that really they should if they wanted to pay for it fully, but it's, you know, it's just something, and that really, we have a transfer that goes out of our general fund into this class size reduction fund. That transfer represents how much we get shorted, basically. So I could point that out as well. Does that answer the question? Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, so capital projects, always of significant concern because of quite a bit of spending that's happening in those funds over the past couple years, a lot of bond projects going on. And you've been, you've received some updates, and if you're a part of the Bond Oversight Committee, you've received updates over the past year, two years, about work that's been done, incredible work by Mr. Cornick and Mr. Johnson. Pretty excited to have some of these projects really ramped up, and, and some of them closing out, so. In early fiscal 20, so, so this coming year, really this summer, I'm talking about after July 1st, we will be using a lot of those bond dollars up in finishing Mark Twain and Fremont Elementary Schools. Hopefully, those will be ready right at the beginning of the school year. I've been guaranteed by Mr. Cornick that that will be the case. No pressure. But one of the really important pieces of this is that this plan itself is, it's a, it's a living document, and it's, it's really representing some decisions that were made a couple years ago, and, and there's not a whole lot of projects on there right now, because there's just a few really expensive ones. And one of them was the idea of building a new school. We thought that, we, we actually have the availability, we could bond this fall, and we originally, initially had talked about building a new school. I think two or three years ago, we were really concerned about maybe some intense population growth with Tesla moving in and that sort of thing, and, and while we certainly have grown, not, not quite sure it's to the extent where we need to be building a school immediately. So that, that, but that's conversation that's going to be coming up, but just, just so understand that what you see in this document represents some of those decisions that were made a couple years ago as to projects, and the board approved those projects for consideration, but again, it's a living document, and, and there's always a chance, we're not ready to pull the trigger on building a new school tomorrow, by, by any means. So I don't want you to feel like by approving this tonight, you're, you are solidifying support that this needs to happen. It's just, it's almost effectively kind of like a placeholder at this point until we, till there's further discussion. Okay. So, sorry, that, that is the, that is Agenda Item 13 for right now. And I have nothing else to say on that topic. President Wilkie?
We're on 14.
Ready for 14.
President, ready for 14.
I'm listening.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not used to it being brief, sorry. Number 14, discussion and possible action to approve revised capital improvement plan for the Carson City School District for fiscal year 2019, 2020, for possible action.
Thank you, President Wilkie, Andrew Feeling again for the record. I'd like to call up my partner in crime, Mr. Mark Cornick, who is far, far more knowledgeable than I on, on many of these topics regarding the capital improvement plan. So in your packet, you should have a document that has various shades of orange and blue, and this has been, it kind of become the standard document. I, I don't know if it's, at the top, it's always so easy to understand, but I, I think as it goes down through the projects, it kind of hopefully makes some sense, and I'll just take a minute here to, to walk through that document. So the, the primary revenue source for your, you basically have two funds that we do capital projects out of. For the capital projects fund, everything related to the capital projects fund is in orange. And at the, the top there, under where it says revenues, the, the primary revenue for this fund is part of the government services tax. So a portion of the government services tax goes into our general fund, a portion goes into our capital projects fund. If we had no bond funding, this is the only revenue source we have for capital projects. And so right now, really, it, it's come around quite a bit since five years ago when I started. I, I think this number was in the low $500,000 range, so with the, the economic recovery, now sitting in the low $700,000 range for next year, based on Department of Taxation projections. One of the other items I wanted to point out, and I wish I would have put this up on the screen, I'm sorry, but three down from there, it says available pay-go, pay-as-you-go. And what that reflects is, at any given time, in our, our debt services fund, our debt service fund, we have to keep enough reserve in there that we could pay at least 50% of whatever bond payments we have to make throughout a year. So there just has to be this reserve of 50% of whatever we're going to owe throughout a year. And if you have more than that 50%, you can access that additional funding for capital project purposes. So it's called pay-as-you-go money, or I always call it pay-go. But basically, because we've had some bonds fall off over the last year, you'll notice that number starts to increase and get fairly large as the years go on. And that just represents that some of these bonds or bond payments are now starting to fall off, so more and more money is becoming available in that debt service fund. You don't, you don't want to use all of it, and it's, it's not like just free money to use towards capital projects by any means, because that's also money you could be using to, if you do, do decide to issue a new bond, you'd be using that money to help make some of those payments. So you don't necessarily want to use all of it, but it is accessible, and many districts do use that to help fund some of their capital projects. And I'll note in this budget that I do have $350,000 moving of that pay-as-you-go money, so if you go two more down, it says actual pay-go transfer from debt fund, I do have $350,000. And at this point, I, I don't know that we'll use it, my concern is that the, the cost of the capital projects we have done, the bond-funded projects and capital projects we have done this year, have so far outpaced anything we expected, that if, if we would get to a point where we, we need an extra cash infusion basically to finish those projects, I want to make sure that, sure, at least at the beginning of the year, that there's something accessible. So I don't know that we'll use it, but I think it, it would be a prudent gesture to, to have some of that available in the, or, or at least at the beginning of this coming year. Once we finish the two big projects at Mark Twain and Fremont up, we'll have a better idea of how necessary that really is. Yeah.
When we're using those pay-go funds, is there like a healthy percentage that you always want to keep in there? I mean, I know that you want to keep as much, but as we're looking at tough budget situations and capital projects that we have to, you know, something goes wrong in a school, we have to fix type.
Sure, yeah, no, that's a really good question. So there's not necessarily an established percentage that you keep, I think, what it really boils down to, down to, is having a feel of what, what your needs are in the future, and then, I mean, really, we, the district works with Marty Johnson as our financial and bond advisor, and he, he can really set the table as far as, okay, so, given your situation, here are some of the some of the options you would have. And so in, in talking with him, this is something that I would talk with him about and say, you know, I think we may need to access some of these funds, I'm not sure. And so in those discussions with him, he, he felt comfortable with this kind of number, even knowing that we may be bonding here, you know, potentially, I don't know that we will, but later this fall, we could actually go out for a new construction bond of twenty to thirty million dollars. So he was comfortable with that. So it really is, it's kind of situational, I guess, but it's, checking with him is kind of our best place to throw it off the board and see, see what he says. Then as you drop down below that in the, the bond fund, we have about, I, I have that we're expecting twenty million in proceeds this year in bond proceeds. That again is, is not absolute, is not necessarily the case if, if, you know, the bond oversight committee decides on a couple of projects and the board is in support of that, and then we get to that point where we want to bond, that there's many steps we have to go through to get there. But again, it's just, the idea is that we, at some point this year, could have that kind of money. And we initially had thought we would bond and end up building at least the initial part of a new, a new school. As you go down through the, the projects then, actual projects under the expenditure lines, the last, I think, three years, this is actually an idea Mr. Kornick came up with was, was, he had gone through and done, had a roofing analysis done of the entire district, had an analysis done of all of the, the parking lots in the district, all the, all the parking areas, and got a feel for what, you know, what, what were the, going to be the coming priorities for us to do replacement. And so the idea was that with, knowing some of those priorities, if we would always set aside a certain amount of money each year, just knowing that we can kind of pick away at some of those things, and some of them are much larger, like the Carson High parking lot was like a three hundred thousand dollar project or something like that. But at least a lot of these smaller ones, just to keep things up and try to, you know, over time, stay responsible to some of those areas. So that, that is what that represents. The, the refresh dollars represents annually going into schools and trying to, you know, replacing pieces of carpet, doing some painting, just trying to keep up with some of the interior maintenance of, of the schools themselves. We do have one million dollars in capital project funding that is, that project is for, so two years ago, we upgraded all of the IT infrastructure at the high school and middle schools. Now it's really moving towards the elementary schools. Talking with Mr. Maderos, I don't believe that it's actually going to end up costing about a million, or a million dollars, but it'll be somewhere just south of there. So that's a bit of a higher number at this point than I, I think I'll really expect. But one of the nice things is that all of these types of expenditures qualify for federal reimbursement through something called E-rate. And we expect that at least fifty percent of the costs would get reimbursed, if not maybe up to eighty percent. So it's a pretty significant government, federal government program that would help us cover those costs and we'll, we'll learn more as, as we get into the year and time progresses. Again, we have the, the K eight school sitting there. What that would cause, that, the number there, really, we were expecting to build half a school. We thought half a school would cost about twenty million dollars, ten million dollars each year. And again, we're, by approving this, we're not saying that we're going to build that school, it's just at this point, it's kind of a placeholder from past discussions, but we still need to have some future discussions as to what we plan on doing. Moving down the line, I'll just note that Fremont and Fritsch, it's, it's kind of an awkward thing for capital projects because in school districts, they primarily happen over the summer and they, they straddle fiscal years. So we don't know exactly how much will be completed before July, or June thirtieth and before, and July first and after, but when we pay those different amounts, they have to be paid in different fiscal years. So again, those numbers may change, it, it just kind of depends how, how that all falls.
Do we see any major, because construction costs have gone up, do we see any major hit to us with those two, especially with the delays?
Mark Kornick, Director of Operations for the record. You know, we've made up time. We had a really rough winter this year, so it was putting us back and back, we were getting kind of nervous and United Construction's made up time. So we're looking at, right now, our date is seventh of August to be complete. Of course, we have to, on the operations side, I have to get crews in to support, getting that furniture put together, getting the whiteboards put up, those kind of things. We also have eighty LCD displays to put up this summer. I have a crew, two guys can put two up a day basically to do that. So they're really busy getting that technology up. We have seen roughly on our projects about twenty five percent increase from two years ago. When we finished Fritsch over a year ago, we had to cut that scope back just a little bit and we were over by about eight percent. Now we're looking at around twenty five percent. And in, in reality, that's in the ballpark because construction's gone up about thirty percent. So we're staying really tight to that, but that's where we're at to be able to build a decent facility.
So how much over budget do you think we'll be by the end, ballpark?
Twenty five percent is roughly a million dollars.
And I was, and that, that's really for, for Pioneer, Mark Twain and Fremont, when we started this process, three, a little over three years ago, we, we had ballparked each of those projects to be, I think, just under four million dollars, if not four million. And I, and, and Mark and Mark, to be really clear, we, we added quite a bit of cushion to those numbers at that time and we really didn't expect anything like that. And now each one of those projects is going to end up being about five million dollars apiece. So it's, it's been pretty difficult to.
Yeah, nobody saw the hikes coming and it's hit that whole industry.
Actually, the cushion was added to the construction cost. The cushion was there for architects, engineers, contingency, but all of that went into construction. So that was the part we're over, was really the soft costs. Yes. Two other projects that were related is to the Mark Twain and Fremont projects. First one was Seelager because we'll be moving their CLS, their Career Life Skills Program from Seelager over to Fremont. And we've built a suite over there for them, three classrooms for the different age groups, a washroom facility for, for those students, et cetera. Going back to Seelager, originally we had a few more dollars in there and, but it's gone down now to fifty thousand dollars. We'll be able to take two smaller classrooms and make it into one larger classroom to meet the needs of the students over there. We have two other classrooms that we need to do some remodeling in, but they can survive at this point the way they are because there'll be an intervention classroom and an ESL classroom. So those are smaller sized class, students in those classes. So they'll be able to work in those classrooms that we already have, but eventually we want to remove a restroom that's in there, do some other work to clean up those classrooms. And also entail taking, getting rid of the portable that we have over there that's just kind of sitting there, not in good condition. We do have, we did have some ADA bathroom improvements we needed to do there, but at this time, when we do the project, we'll do a minimal amount that's required of us. And in the future, we'll have to include those in projects. Every time you do a project, you have to include some ADA improvements in the building. So that actually took some money, also lowered some of the funds for Boarderwick because we have a kindergarten, an additional kindergarten that we, I'm going to take one large area and make two kindergartens out of it to increase that. I think time will tell in the next few months, when our budget numbers come in, what that dollar amount will be. They already know that that's not going to be this summer, it's going to be during the year or next summer. So hopefully we're in a little better position to go in and, and do that, that work for them there. So yeah, it's been really tight, it's been frustrating not being able to build what we really need to build at this point and, but we have to do it modularly now.
If I could, I'm just wondering, at Boarderwick, where are you going to make one larger space into two smaller spaces? Where's that space going to be? Because I know they're pretty well tapped out of room right now.
We have two different conceptual plans for that, but the one that I think's going to work the best is the current kindergarten where there's a stage on the other side of the multipurpose room. The principal and the leadership there says they don't need the stage area. And so we would remove that and make that whole area, which was an old music room with risers in there. And so we've got kindergartners in there that aren't in a really good space and they can go behind the stage where a computer area is. So we would pretty much gut that area and make it into two kindergartens, which have nice access to an outdoor area there, the garden area. And, or it could be for kindergartens, it could be an area to, for a play area for the kids to get out, get a little refreshed.
Would it be next to the multipurpose room and the lunchtime crowd? Is that going to affect the students who are in that, those classrooms?
Well, it hasn't, so far at this point, but having that opportunity to, to gut that and rebuild it, we could put in acoustical walls around that area that would take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Kornick. I think I've kind of gone through everything and I've already kind of gone through this slide in one way or another, so we are, I guess, looking for action on, on this document.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the revised capital improvement plan and the operating, the opening balance fund three hundred, capital projects for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Mike, second by Richard. Any other discussion by the board? Seeing none, any other discussion by the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Your budget is good. Moving on to discussion and possible action on the final budget, including adjustments to the tentative budget for the Carson City School District for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, including adoption of a resolution approving the final budget and transmential, transmittal letter for possible action.
Thank you, President Wilkie and trustees, Andrew Feeling for the record. So we'll be going through the, some of the highlights of the, now what would be the original final budget for the Carson City School District. And starting with a very brief review of, of some of the, some of what we've gone through and what are some of the assumptions, and then just getting into kind of what, how this budget breaks down and what looks different. There's a couple, as I, I know trustee Cassiopeia always appreciates my beautiful graphs and charts that I bring with on, on these types of occasions.
Back you a hundred percent.
There's, there's a couple that actually stood out to me, kind of told a little bit of a story in, in some, some different ways. So I'll just point those out, but again, I really did cut this down, so hopefully I, I won't upset President Wilkie with any of this. So first, one of, one of the, the primary pieces, we are, important concepts, I guess, we, we always try to hold by is that we want to hold the fund balance above eight point three percent as, at a minimum point, and, and this budget does that. It's, it's hard to say that with complete absolute certainty because we don't actually know how much money we are going to have next year. In the current year, our per people amount is about, is seven thousand one hundred ninety eight dollars per pupil. Next year, in the budget that you have in front of you, it represents a per people amount of seven thousand and sixty dollars. So it's a reduction of one hundred and thirty eight dollars. Again, based on what I, I believe happened at the legislature on Saturday and still needs to go through some levels of approval, but the DSA budget was closed. And, and with that, through various cuts, more money was added to the budget and then they also, and, and very excitedly so, added money for what they said were inflationary costs of districts, so really non-staffing costs, which is the first time since two thousand and seven that they have added anything to the DSA in recognition that costs go up for districts outside of staffing, which is pretty incredible. But I, I think also a reflection of the economic times that, that we've been in, or we're in for quite a while. So anyway, we should have a better idea of that number. I, I believe it will be, again, at least what we have this year, but I, I'm pretty sure it'll be a little bit more than that, so that, that will swing us back in a better direction, which is, you know, for the, for, for the health of what we're doing in the district and for planning purposes, that, that is a better, better place to be. So the budget includes all step in column movement for employees, increased health insurance costs, which you know are five percent, meeting all our required staffing ratios. On the non-staffing side, the, the two primary pieces, we have the cops in school program, which will continue to be a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar cost for the district. We have our tech replacement schedule, which of course, this was whittled down a bit, but we are going to be replacing all the Chromebooks in the district next year that, that were expected to be replaced, which is all of the sixth graders and all of the ninth graders in the district, along with all of Pioneer High School, which is about, altogether about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One, one item of note that we don't have on here, and as a reminder of some of the cuts that we made, for the last three years, the district has set aside about one million, if not more than one million dollars for curriculum purchases, and that is something that for this next year at least, we, we don't have listed as a budget item. The, some of the important pieces for determining revenue, again, knowing your enrollment, and for us, it's average daily enrollment, so they, they literally look at every single day throughout a school year and it all gets averaged together, and that is how you get funded. So as that fluctuates during the year, or as kids get enrolled late, that, that impacts, impacts us every day. It's like thirty, I think like this year was thirty nine dollars and seventy five cents per day. If a, if a student should have been enrolled in school, but they weren't, we lost thirty nine dollars and seventy five cents every day they weren't enrolled. Special ed funding, we're estimating about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in that, but we do not officially know a number yet. Again, adult ed and prison ed programs are both taking decreases for next year, but that has, we've worked that out with Mr. Santillo and his staff, and we think we can get him through safely through this next year before hopefully getting some increased funding in the following year.
AJ?
Yes.
Excuse me. On the prison ed funding, how are you making up that difference, that seventy thousand dollar difference?
It's, so Mr. Santillo has two staff members that are, I'm sorry, so one, one retired at the beginning of the school year, and then he has another one that's retiring now. He did not replace the one from the beginning of the school year, he is not replacing this one at this point, but the plan is that he would be able to bring it back specifically to support the culinary arts program there, which is a, a pretty significant program with the, with the prison education folks. So the, the idea is that he would have to mothball it for a year, but then he'd be able to bring it back. They've given all of the directors in the state these kind of projected numbers, there, there's going to be kind of a reallocation, redistribution of income, and Carson actually stands to benefit from it, but it's not going to take effect until fiscal twenty one. So for one more year, he has to, to make it through with some reduced revenue, but then it should start coming back.
So basically salary savings is what he's going to use to make up that?
Yeah, and I should say too, he's, there's actually quite a bit of non-staffing costs as well. So just for example, the culinary program by itself, there's about, I think he spends about $30,000 or $40,000 a year on supplies for the culinary program. So by not having a culinary teacher, he's also saving on supplies because they won't be purchasing anything like that. And there's a couple other resources too, but that's the primary one that comes to mind.
Just curious, in your meetings with the state officials, why are they cutting the prison programs?
It's not so much that they're cutting the programs, it's that more money is flowing toward Clark County to support their growing prison population. I mean, and Mr. Santillo, I would love to call Mr. Santillo right now and bring him in. But there's a formula that they devised a number of years ago. And the way this formula works, it's ending up that more and more funds are being diverted. And I shouldn't say diverted, I mean, it's legitimately based on population to a great extent. So more and more funding is going to Clark because their prison population is increasing. But I think there actually is some additional funding that is coming in the second year of the biennium, but then they're also changing how it gets distributed. And it's supposed to stand to benefit Carson in that process. Okay. So last year, nutrition program, we still don't know what our federal reimbursement rates are for, oh, it should be for FY '20, sorry. That is the primary revenue generator actually for the program is when kids either get a free lunch, a reduced lunch, or a full price lunch, the federal government does reimburse us to a different level for each one of those types of meals, breakfast and lunch. But we don't know what those rates of reimbursement are yet, so that'll be a big factor. But we estimate at this time. We do also have historically received a guarantee from Aramark, our food service management company. We should be bringing you that contract, I believe it's at the next meeting here in June, for your consideration. It is the last year that we can stay with Aramark. I should say, it's the last year we can stay on the current contract. We must go out to RFP bid for the school year that follows. So if they decide to participate again, they may win again, but there's a lot of competition in that market. So waiting to be seen. And again, class size reduction, we don't know exactly what our funding is for next year. The count day headcount, we're expecting just over 7,800 kids, which for funding purposes works out to about 7,778.8 children. And that is what we multiply against that per pupil number. And just to give you an idea of that average daily enrollment and what that looks like historically, so what you have here is the last, to the far right is what's projected for next year for enrollment. And then you have this year and then the past three years. You'll notice that 1516, which is the year furthest to the left, and I'm sorry, some of the detail is hard to read, which is nothing new, I guess I should say. But that, for this to the left, that was before kindergartners were counted as a full student. So that's why that looks like such a dramatic drop, or I guess really increase going into that next year. It truly isn't, it's just because of how they counted kindergartners. But at least from the year after that, you can see we've had steady growth in the student population. We're projecting more growth here in the near future. This is a historical look at enrollment. And you can see, I tried to put in a little red line to bring that across, but if we're projecting about 7,778 kids, that's about equivalent to where we were 11, 12 years ago for student population. And we were well above that in the late 90s and early 2000s. But then, of course, it was kind of, it came back again lower. So still the high watermark for the district is still 2003, as far as the highest population point. We had over 8,500 students that year. This is just the calculation for how they come up with your DSA, your state support, your basic support, basically taking your weighted enrollment times your per pupil amount. And again, we are using 7,060 at this time. And that gets you to a certain number. Then you also include special education funding, based on how many students we have in the district. If you recall, the state, up until your special education population being 13% of your total population, you get a certain funding weight. Here, projecting it to be a little over $4,000 per pupil, but for every student over that 13% mark, you can get up to half of that initial per pupil amount. So it's kind of a hard thing to project because you don't really know if the state's going to give you the whole half or much less than half. But we, based on what happened last year, or this current year, we did receive some of that funding. We would expect that to continue. But the total population for the district, we're at about 14.5% of our students qualify for special education services right now. So we're a little bit above that 13% cap. As you make your way down, the two primary, I'll kind of, oops, this isn't, the two primary local revenues are just to the right of that green dot, if you can see that, the local school support tax. That is up significantly year to year. It's been adding about $2 million per year for the last four years. So it's really doing well, the economy, I think, doing well. And then the ad valorem property taxes. So in total, we collect about nine, almost, or we're expecting to collect just over $10 million in ad valorem property taxes this year. But 3.6 million is included in this current DSA calculation, the way the Nevada plan works. So that's why there's only about a third represented there. So anyway, that's found in your packet, I think on page five, it actually shows that calculation in a little more clear way. This is just a slide I always saw, and it's historical tax rates for Carson City. So going back to 1974, fortunately, my predecessors kept a lot of this information, and it makes for great graphing opportunities. But your blue is what your operating tax rates were. So you go back into the 1970s, the school districts were collecting about $1.50 per $100 assessed value in local taxes. And then you have your taxpayers' revolt time period, 1980, 1981, and that crashes. You get a couple of years down the road, there's a recession, the state realized, my gosh, we can't fund education anymore on ourselves, we have to put more back on the local taxpayers, and the rate goes up to .75. And so it's been .75 for almost 30 years now. And then the red represents debt service rates. So this, historically, there was more flexibility with this for school districts, and that's why back in like 92, 93, we were able to build two elementary schools and combine the two Carson High buildings into one. We could never levy for that amount anymore because of the tax caps that are, the countywide tax caps that are in place. We're currently at about 43 cents. This is all the revenues that we take in, so all of your funds are represented. And I guess the biggest piece of this is just that the general fund at 55% is the largest revenue source for the district. It always is. It's skewed a little bit because we have a lot of bond funding at this point that we may be expecting. So it kind of throws it off. You'll see that's at like 17%. One thing I just want to note is, and I always try to point this out, for special education, which is just to the right of the dot, is about 4%. So of all the revenues we take in, special ed is about 4% of all those revenues. However, when you get to our expenditures, special education in the red, just to the right of the dot, is about 11%. So we really, the amount of special education aid we receive from the state does not come anywhere close to covering the actual costs of special education. So I always like to point that out as an ongoing concern for all school districts in the state. So this was an interesting one. So each year, I'll show how it breaks down as far as what percent of our budget is salaries and benefits versus non-staffing costs. And so if you look at all of our funds, and I didn't include the bond fund because the bond fund really skews this because it's a lot of money and it's all non-staffing costs, but it's not an ongoing thing. So I don't think it's really fair to throw it in. But salaries and wages are about 53%, benefits about 25%. So you're at about 78% of our costs are staffing costs, which historically is pretty in line with what we've looked at before. It's been a little over 80 and down into that upper 70 range before. But what was interesting is, if you just look at the general fund, and this actually kind of surprised me, and it was really thrown off the last number of years because we have spent so much on, we've added so much in non-staffing costs with a lot of curriculum, you know, millions of dollars in curriculum, all the technology replacement that's going on. And so now that, this year that, you know, with the deficit that we're looking at, we've pulled back on some of that hopefully temporarily. And then you look at how the general fund breaks down with 59% in salaries and wages and 28% in benefits, you're at 87% of your costs are staffing. Now, that is getting towards the upper end of what you'll hear with school districts, but there are some school districts that are now creeping into the 90, 91% range. So that just really stands out with scaling some of those staff, or non-staffing costs back this year. So I don't know that it's specifically a concern, but I think it goes back to, you know, hopefully for next year, we're going to be okay. We'll see what happens the year after that. But with, especially with this new model coming into play, if we have significant budget concerns in the near future, it's hard, you know, if you're going to have to look for places to save money in your budget, it's really hard to get away from staffing just because there's so much of your costs are on the staffing side. But hopefully, two years from now, we'll have a better answer to all that and have that figured out. So revenues, expenditures, fund balance, just some quick graphs. So when you look at the general fund, where our resources come from, when I got here five years ago, the local sources and state sources were actually, I think they were both right around like 40, I think they were right around both 40%. So it was much more even. But now with the economy recovering, the local school support tax, property taxes coming back, when that goes up, it's always a seesaw. So now the state doesn't have to put as much money in to fund education. And that's just how it always works. And that's how most states work, actually. Historical revenues, so next year, we're looking at about a little over 65 million, which is actually what we have projected right now, but we know now is going to be better, hopefully. But we're projecting to have slightly less revenue next year than we do this year. But fortunately, again, we'll be improving upon that. Where we spend money, at least within the general fund, the large blue dot on this side is just regular standard everyday educational services. So that's about 43%. Actually, regular instructional services. So that's most of your elementary school, teaching staff, well, most of your middle school and high school teaching staff. Then you get into some of the specialties, vocational and technical, it's your CTE courses, alternative education, all of Pioneer goes here, also the ESL, so all of our ESL services go here. You can see this 1% under co-curricular and extracurricular, that little orange slice there. So, you know, if there's ever concern about, well, you know, some people, they'll say, well, why don't you cut, you know, sports programs and activities at the schools? That does almost nothing. We spend so little in the bigger scheme of things on those programs. Support services, so this is like a lot of your, a lot of the student support, tutoring And then getting into like administration and transportation and things like that all end up in the support services area. And then you have some of the fund transfers as well. This is how those actual numbers break down year to year. There's a reduction in the regular education programming, and that primarily is because of not purchasing curriculum next year. So while the teaching staff, all the actual instructional staff really is holding the same for next year, on the non-staffing cost, that's bringing this number down on the regular ed side. Otherwise, trying to think of where the other, so in support services for staff, that's where a lot of our TOSA positions recided. You notice there's a significant reduction there on that number. So based on this budget, and going by what is in the documents, and what I would view as a worst case scenario, I don't believe our opening, our opening fund balance next year will be just over $12 million. I think it'll be closer to 13, but based on what's budgeted, that's the number we're near. And then you have your revenues minus your expenditures. Now, one of the additions to the expenditure line is annually, we have this carry forward policy with our school sites and departments. Basically, if they're responsible with their budget, they don't spend their entire budget down, they're allowed to carry a portion with that to the next year. That gives them some authority to spend it in the next year. And it also gives a disincentive to them just blowing money at the end of the year just because they have it and they know they're going to lose it. So there's about $208,000 in that carry forward that now is being added in for next year. And so if you take that revenue minus that expenditure, you have about a $2.7 million deficit. So again, the, so the last, at the tentative budget we spoke, we had it at about $2.9 million. We were able to make a couple additional changes, cuts, and get it down to about $2.5 million. And then now this, adding this carry forward brings it back about $200,000. In your document, and actually in the resolution itself, it says the deficit is $3.7 million. And the reason for that is we added in the $1 million contingency line. And again, we generally, in looking back, I think, like 15 years, this year is the first year we've ever actually spent out of contingency. So I don't want you to think that is something we regularly dig into. It is unusual for the district to do that. But it's there in case we would ever have to access funds. Because once, once a budget is made, if there's a certain level of expenditure, and if something would come up that we really needed to take care of, we can't just pull money out, we can't go back and submit a new budget, especially once we get past December. So having that contingency line is basically the recognition that if something comes up, we can access those funds. We really don't have intention to, but we could if we needed to. So that's why that document says $3.7 million. But if you peel that $1 million of contingency back, if you peel back the $208,000 of carry forward, you're at about a $2.5 million deficit. And again, based on what happened at the legislature on Saturday, that looks to only be getting better. And, you know, that, I would like to have a solid number today, and we don't, but it does look to be getting quite a bit better than what we expected. Based on these numbers then, if you, oops, sorry, if you use those, you'd have about $9.3 million fund balance left, which is about 13.73%. One of the things that actually we're going to have to have a conversation about at some point, and it's not right now, is there's this whole, in the new SB 543, which is this new pupil-centered funding plan the district has come up with, or the, sorry, the state has come up with. We would have come up with a better name than that, I just don't like it. Yeah. But a part of that plan is, a district in the future would only be able to carry a fund balance of up to 16.6%. And after that, anything that, tax on top of that would get swept each year back to the state, back to the state's education fund. So there's some strategy to be discussed about where, you know, where do you want that percentage actually to be? Because you may not want to be right on the cutting edge of that 16.6% because if you have some costs that come in lower than expected, you're losing that money. So you may actually want to be in, say, like a 13% to 14% range to give you some cushion and make sure that sort of thing doesn't happen, which it seems kind of silly, you'd have to play that game. But, you know, you just, you have to do what you can to protect the resources that you History of ending fund balances, I would throw this in. I realize after I did this, it really doesn't probably tell the best. It would have been better to have this on a percent. Um, it would've been better to have this on a percentage basis than to have absolute dollar amounts, and these are absolute dollar amounts. Um, but you can see in the buildup to the recession and the in the kind of the recovery after the recession, um, we were able to build up fund balances and one to really kind of protect the district here and really to here um with the help of of some of our employee groups to get through these times, um, to help get the district back on track with some curriculum purchases and technology and things such such as that. Um, but now, again, tha- that number will would be coming down again. I don't believe it will be this bad. It's just based on the absolute budgeted, I should say, it's bad, this low, um, absolute budgeted numbers. Uh, one of the things that we have to discuss um by statute and and as a part of the board approving the the budget, I consider the the prices for uh nutrition services next year to be a part of that approval. Um, so each year, um, the state gives us, and it's actually a a federal document that helps determine what our prices need to be for the next year. It's not really in our control. Um, and and the reason is that um, for a long time, districts weren't raising their prices fast enough. Um, and so there were, districts were basically making, making more money off of their federal reimbursements um and focusing on that, rather than also saying, well, if you're paying for lunch, you also should be paying a reasonable amount for lunch. So they built this new uh formula, which helps make sure districts are keeping their prices up along with the reimbursement rates to make sure it's kind of fair, um, or I guess fairer. Um, so anyway, the, we have the elementary school uh price going up by five cents to from two-eighty-five to two-ninety. Middle school holding steady, and then high school going from three to three-twenty-five. There are no other changes to any of the prices in the the menu for nutrition. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Start off with you, Richard. Any comments, questions?
AJ, thank you for all the work you've done. You've done a terrific job. My question is, if we get the additional revenue you're talking about, maybe the million to one-point-five million, is that going to go towards the reduction of the deficit and not for additional spending?
So that's a good question. Um, at at this point, based upon what what we have presented, I I think it would go towards reducing the deficit. However, um, I would be, i- if it's that significant an amount, um, we likely would do an amended budget um coming here next month. And if if there, you know, in discussions, there was a desire to to try to add something, we we certainly could. There is the option to. Um, but at this point, um, you know, in in trying to think about it longer term, it it may be uh more prudent to try to use that money just to reduce the deficit at this point and then do further planning. And i- you know, maybe it'll end up being even better than I'm anticipating, or maybe some other grant will come out that will, you know, benefit us. But um, uh, i- it it really ultimately is up up to the boards, the board's choice. But I I think it would, given, given where we are in some of the uncertainty, it may be a good idea to um just kind of absorb that for for now.
I would agree with that, because if we don't, then next year, we may have to make even more drastic reductions. So I would agree with that, uh, being prudent.
Laurel?
Just a-
I'm just gonna go down the line, you guys.
Okay, do you guys know?
Thank you, AJ, for all the work that you've done on this and for um going to the hearings at the legislature as well. Um, just a question I have, because it's been in the news about the three percent increase the governor has promised to teachers. Our contracted agreement with our staff is a two percent increase this year and a two percent increase the following year, where the governor's is only a three percent over the two years.
Ours is for four.
Uh, yeah, our, ours is two years and then, right. Okay, correct me on where it is, but I'm just trying to figure out, is 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 our, does our budget reflect that three percent, or does it reflect our agreement, which is actually higher than the three percent, if I'm understanding correctly?
So the, our our uh negotiated increases for the next two years are a two percent and a two percent. Um, the governor's uh budget includes a three percent and a zero percent in the second year. Um, the budget you have before you reflects what we've collectively bargained, which is the two percent and the two percent. Um, so if you, if you, um, we certainly do not have a a three percent in this next year, but the overall impact over two years is actually a a better place for staff than um having a three and a zero. So it's kind of extending um that impact.
Is there any possibility of re, I I mean, not that I'm, I I don't wanna do, say anything that would reopen negotiations or anything like that, but is that something that staff seems agreeable to, or I I what's, what's, have you heard anything?
Um, no, we we haven't really had the the discussion. So, I mean, it, I think negotiations can be, I think, opened, reopened at at any time if both sides are mutually agreeable to it.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that right now, because I see Mr. Poplock is giving me the eyes. But um, I just, you know, I just, I I do think our staff is getting um the benefit that way. So I just wanted to see where we were on that.
Yeah.
Lupe?
I just wanna thank you for sharing this detailed information with us. I'm trying to get my head around all this information. Like, all I can say is, thank God he's on the, and he's, and in this place, because you're extremely knowledgeable, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
I'm wondering if we have any connections to Morehead College.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we learned that at the WNC commencement. We don't. Um, does the budget, we, with all the retirees, we were, you know, um acknowledging today, is that, is that factored into this budget, or are we expecting that, you know, with the, anytime you 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 get people with longevity retiring and you replace them with younger people,
Sure.
there's generally a savings there. Are we gonna see any savings, or is that factored in?
So I I I have a little bit of savings factored in, not as much as I have in previous years. And I'll tell you, historically, we'd always seen quite a bit of savings, and this year, we did not. It actually, it it was the other way around, which was really strange. Um, so I I do have a little bit factored in, but not, not in any way specific to these individuals. There's just, I I, once I came to a final cost, still including all these folks, I shaved a little bit back off that. So um, we'll have a better idea really come September, um, how that plays out with, once we have all the new staff in. Um, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have everyone kind of up and ready to go and in place, so we can see what our our kind of new costs look like at that point.
Don?
Again, thank you uh for all your efforts. I was gonna talk about the three percent. That was my question.
Okay.
I guess some of the things I've read, and I don't, would the three percent be a ca, I, I've heard it talked about as a cost of living increase across the board.
Right.
Would that be
So-
above our two percent negotiated? And would the state give us that money?
It, it w- it would be above the two percent, so that that, and and when we're, when we're saying, you know, we're, we're talking about a two percent increase, that that really is that cost of living piece. So when the state, when when the governor's saying it's a three percent cost of living increase, um, and we're saying, well, we're giving a a two percent, it it's really truly two percent versus three percent, we're talking about the same thing. Um, the difference is the governor has no cost of living increase in the second year, while we have another two percent increase. Um, so, yeah, it it's a, I, i- it's been interesting wi- with the state. I mean, the appearance to me is that with a lot of the cuts, there were a lot of cuts made to all sorts of budgets, a lot of education, but even like Enche's budget was cut in some other places. And and it seemed like they were trying to free up funds to try to help support, I think, what the governor wa- was trying to do. Um, I, w- w- I don't know that it's enough necessarily. I mean, statewide or even for us at this point, because we still don't, don't have a number. Um, but it's been an interesting process to watch for sure, because now all of a sudden, it's like they've miraculously come up with all this money, and everyone's patting themselves on the back, and it's wonderful. And but it was just cuts from other places. So, you know, I, yeah, I don't know. It's, it was, uh, it's been interesting. I I'm, I'm just grateful that um there was some recognition that the, I I don't believe the budget was exactly what the state thought it was. And so they're trying to make up for some of that, and I'm completely grateful for for our staff and students for that, for sure.
Well, you know, I just wanna say, facing some difficult information months ago, I think we gave the direction of really doing what we can do without impacting staff or decimating our instructional programs. And so that's one of the things that I had called AJ about today and just kind of checked. And I think that strategically, using retired positions or unfilled positions um and grant funds, we have kind of faced this, and we haven't really impacted staff immensely. There's a few, few positions that are, were impacted, but I think that for the most part, in the classroom, students with teachers, I think that we've kind of kept that together. And so I think that that's huge, because we're still giving teachers the tools they need. We're still getting the curriculum out to them, which we have been kind of sitting and waiting to to have the resources to do that. And so I think it's a well-balanced approach, and I think that it's not where any of us would want it to be. I think that there's areas that we're all wishing we had a lot more money. But I think that what I hope our staff knows is that we took great care to protect them at all costs. And so I just want everybody to know that that was truly our focus as we went forward. So I I think it's just important for us to say that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Laurel.
Hey, sorry, I forgot another question I had, because you said there's no money budgeted in this um budget for curriculum purchases, and Mrs. Kima has been very busy um bringing new curriculum. Do we anticipate any areas of curriculum that we're holding off on for the next year? Or are we, did we get a lot taking care of this cycle?
So um, I think some of this has to do with the state board, right, is is a, an ongoing issue. And I I don't always understand the the timing on that. Um, we're certainly hoping that within the ed services budget, we can maybe make some of these things happen. And and I think some of it is, um, there there's not, there's not specifically dedicated, normally, there there's this dedicated pot outside of the ed services budget. Um, but inside the ed services budget, over the years, Mrs. Kima has also purchased a a bun, uh, some curriculum uh materials. So I don't know if you wanna, is there anything else you wanna add to that?
The materials adoptions follow that natural curriculum process when the curriculum is completed or at a really good state, because curriculum's never completed. It, that's the next, that next stage is to select the materials. And as uh you heard from the teachers tonight, social studies is fourteen years old. Think about what's happened in the world fourteen years ago. And so that, there is, there is that. We start off the year with these projects, we see who can get to the finish line, we fund those projects that are based on what the dollar amount the board gives us, and then we save the next projects for the following budget year, knowing that there isn't any funding for the next budget year. Um, and these projects won't be approved by the state board till August twenty-ninth. So we have to, we've got some time there, um, because uh obviously, the the legislative session will be completed. We'll know a little bit more what the real number is for our budget. Um, and then there's a third factor in there, and that is the state is changing its materials adoption process. And what you saw tonight is the last time that I will be presenting to you um purchases that affect the general fund in thi- this um, this procedure that the state has for us at this time. Um, and that's its own presentation, but the state is making a change. You'll see me bring a proposal for CTE materials in June. But that is part of where the state is going with this new process. Um, in the past, CTE hasn't had to have their materials approved. And now the state is trying to get everybody on a list to get the materials on a list so that they know what to start with. And and I, and I I sound like I'm talking in circles, but basically, we put out the art request for proposal. We bring in as a district the materials for our teachers to take a look at. We use the state rubric to choose those materials. We bring it to you for approval. It goes to the state board for approval, and then we make a purchase. The state is moving to a different model where they send out their RFI. They choose the materials, they take a look at the materials. They have a committee that determines the rubrics and selects the materials, and then we get to pick off a list. So the nice part of that is that once we go before the board, we can purchase right, I can purchase right away. I don't have to wait till agenda item on the state board. Some people are a little concerned about the fact that, you know, um, there's maybe only gonna be two content areas a year that the state will look at. I'm on those committees. Um, next year, they're gonna look at science and social studies. That will help us, because we still have some social studies, more social studies work to continue. Uh, we don't need science materials, so they can take all the time in the world they want on that particular one. So it it's a flip, and some concerns is how, how modern will they be with the technology aspects? And how, um, you know, if you didn't approve our world language materials in the past weeks, we couldn't even look at them until two thousand and twenty-three at this point.
Thank you so much for doing so much with the curriculum before of all that.
I I think our teachers-
I can't even imagine.
Appreciate the autonomy of, you know, if they didn't like something, like with ASL, there isn't a whole lot out there for American Sign Language. We didn't get the materials we wanted right away. So then we went back out, based on some resources that the teachers, teacher um shared with us. We went back out um doing that for our staff. Um, so, so there's, there's a lot that's going on behind the scenes with this materials, instructional materials adoption, and the state recognizes that master con, master price agreement contract does not accommodate technology-based companies very well. It just doesn't. What? We gotta lock us in? Imagine if I told Apple, we're gonna lock you in for seven years. You, technology-based companies don't operate that way. So they wanna, they, they haven't made decisions, but they're looking to get out of the contract business, and yet they're concerned about trying to make districts our size get the best price, you know? So-
And I think, and correct me if I was wrong, I think what Tracy Crossman was asking is, we don't really have any outstanding areas of curriculum that we're gonna need to look at right away. We've pretty much have covered all of the big ones, correct?
We have covered all the big ones. We need still, um, we we need to do phase two of social studies. That's where we're at. And phase two of social studies looks way different than phase one. Um, seventh and eighth grade needs to be shored up. They weren't before you tonight, because we're in a different place with them, with their curriculum work. For the high school level, it's all in the honors area. And and the discussions around that might be open-ed resources, which is not necessarily buying a textbook, but working with Stanford, working with um, um, different resources that are online from universities that are open to districts or from different governmental agencies, being that it's social studies, um, for social studies, where we can have online up-to-date materials all along. So there's, there's some other options for the next phase that's going out there. And we talked about with, with seventh and eighth grade and the middle school having open-ed options as well, because a lot of t- teachers, such as Mr. Wallace, teach with more than just a a book in front of them. So, so as far as, that was a long answer. So to make your, the answer more short and succinct is, yes, we still have some adoption to do that is in the social studies area of phase two, but it's not like what you've seen. And and there's some more flexibility with what we could do with the honors courses and what seventh and eighth grade was interested in doing.
Even though we're not budgeting for curriculum purchases next year, we're in a pretty good place.
We're in a really good- We're in a really good place. We need to see with what, now that we're placing all the orders, what's, what won't get funded. There may be some things that you've seen that won't be funded, because some other things took more funding, and then you have to make some decisions with that.
And if I understand that, too, then it, but because you've gone through this process, at least when we are ready to purchase, we can purchase what we, what our people-
What our people want.
Versus something that the state has come up with.
Right, what our people looked at, what they chose, yes.
So I guess the only other question I have, since they cut the safer school stuff, are, how are our social workers going to end up?
So, I actually got a call today about an emergency bill that was brought into the session specifically reinstituting, or bringing back some of that funding that had been cut. I don't exactly understand where they're finding the funding now, but apparently they are. So I, I don't have a great answer to that right now. Mrs. Kima, I don't know if-
I don't, I don't know anything more than you do at this point.
Are they in the budget that way? Or is their position contingent on some funding that we don't know if we're getting or not getting yet? So they're not in the budget?
So, so in the, so in the school climate grant, we put in our social workers. Of course, that funding didn't fund all of them. We were looking for the bridge to be the school safety and funding. But that grant asked for something it never asked before. It said, if you don't have enough funding in this grant, how much do you need to make this project whole? So they've never asked that before. So we put the amount in there, and then we knew this other safety grant was coming down the pike, and we were going to prioritize the social workers in that as part of our ask. And then, of course, now some things have changed. So with this particular, with this new bill, if it comes with funding, I would think we are going to ask for the other portion of what wasn't funded in the school climate bill. Otherwise, we go back to contracts, and not full-time employees.
And the contracts are in here?
Uh, no. So the contracts would still be grant-funded, but it's just a different way to, I guess, different costs associated with contract versus actually having an employee. So I guess regardless, they would, they would, they would still, our expectation is they're still there, but that they're, and they would continue to be a grant-funded item. They're not in the, in the general fund in any way, they're not represented in the general fund.
Any other questions? It's been a long six months, and it's gotten a lot better than we expected, even though it's not as good as we'd like. But I'm glad we're finally at this point. So, Joe?
So just as a recap for me, we're looking at, we expect things to get a little better, but we're projecting a two point seven million dollar deficit, three point seven if we include the million dollar contingency.
That, that's correct.
Right, that's, that's our, given what we know now, our worst-case scenario.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I, I think it, I think it very, a very unlikely case, based on what, what we heard on Saturday, and what information's been going around, that it's going to get, it will be better soon.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm going to support this. However, I think everybody knows that I don't like large deficits. I think it puts us in a bad fiscal position, especially if that funding doesn't come through. But I am going to make a motion. I move that the Board of, the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the final budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, by approving the resolution and transmitting, transmitted letter, and further instruct the, let me get my glasses here, the directors, the director of Fiscal Services to file the necessary documents to comply with NRS Chapter three fifty-four.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Laurel. Any other discussion or questions by the board? Seeing none, any public comment or discussion or questions from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a budget.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ken and AJ, for all your hard work, appreciate it. Moving on to number sixteen, approval of the consent agenda for possible action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Dawn. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, any public comment or discussion? Seeing none, all those approve?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number seventeen, informational items. As you can see, we're getting down to it, it's all celebrations. If you have any questions? I'm getting close, this cold's just kicking my butt. This is the latest I've been up in ten days. Moving on to number eighteen, requests for future agenda items. Anybody? Nope. Okay. Then at number nineteen, we are adjourned. Thank you guys so much for tonight. Appreciate it.
If I can make one comment real quick, Tasha, welcome aboard. And do you still want the job? We're looking forward to work with you.